Welcome. If I could, call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. So moved? Moved by Ms. Karen, second by Mr. Vagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
Four nothing, motion carries. Do I see any walk-ins tonight? We all know what a walk-in is? All right. No walk-ins tonight. Now we have the report of the town administrator, Jim Boudreau.
Good evening. Sorry if this is redundant because we just did most of this this morning, but we'll go through it again.
It's a lot of good news, Jim.
There's a lot of stuff going on. We have actually a lot of new stuff this week that we haven't talked about, so we'll start with the regular stuff. I won't spend too much time on the water update because the water department will do some updates later. But we are still working on Old Oak and Bucket. We're doing the services now. As soon as that project is finally done, the crew will move to Brook Street and replace the water lines from front to Tilden, then slightly down Tilden for a little bit, so that's ongoing. I believe they're designing the small, single streets now, starting those done. But Old Oak and Bucket should be finished shortly, and once it's done, we will pave Old Oak and Bucket Road for the entire length of that project. Water demand was down again last week, down almost 100,000 gallons a day to 1.317 million gallons. The manganese levels are slowly dropping in the reservoir. They are still high enough, though, to cause discolored water in the reservoir. The treatment plant does not treat for iron and manganese, so that will cause discolored water. The reservoir at Tac Factory right now is at 5.5-plus inches. I don't think anybody can remember a September where we had that much water in the reservoir, which always leads to the question, why do we have a water ban? People just need to know the water ban that is in place right now is a state-imposed water ban. It's imposed on all the communities in our catch basin that withdraw water from that aquifer, so that is not us. Our water ban's going into effect as our water usage goes up, but the state water ban is regardless of how much water you have, how much you're using, goes into effect May 1st every year, and that is the water ban we are currently under. The treatment plant, Kevin will touch this quick, briefly about the new treatment plant. We're in week five out of seven for the pilot program for the new water treatment plant. COVID cases jumped to 29 this week from 17 the week before. Two weeks before that, we were in the mid-20s, so we're kind of in that teen-to-high-20 range. But our positivity rating over the last 14 days actually went down slightly, 2.83, down from 3.06. So you can see those numbers are kind of in conflict. The state number is also down, 2.43 from 2.75, but the county number is up. The county number's up to 3.9 from 3.55. So the numbers are kind of all over the place. As we've said, we will continue to monitor those numbers. The border health does have the ability to put a mask mandate in place for town buildings or for all public spaces in the town. But until we see that number continually rise on a regular basis, we will just monitor it at this point and see where it goes. We are waiting for guidance on the Moderna and Pfizer booster shots. We have not received that yet. Once we get it, we will pass that along. First Parish work is continuing. If you go up there now, you can see the sidewalk. They're getting close to finishing the sidewalk. The new granite curbing looks fantastic. I think the new sidewalk that we'll be doing from the senior center across First Parish to connect to Central Park will be fantastic. It'll connect the seniors, it'll connect the library and the Central Park fields to the senior center, the food pantry, and recreation. We started final paving today on Jefferson Lane, Washington Lane, Clifton Ave., and Thomas Ave. Those should be finished up either today or the next couple of days. And I'll just remind people, Old Oak and Bucket and First Parish, when that paving is done, as paving completes, speeds tend to go up. We will be doing intensive traffic enforcement in both those areas when the paving is done. So when you see the paving trucks, you better start slowing down. Steven and Rick, renovations continue. If you go over there now, you'll see that the boards have arrived. They arrived today. They'll start installing those tomorrow. The surface is down. We are asking people, you need to stay out of that area. It is a construction zone. We've actually, the contractor has padlocked the construction fence to the tennis court fence to keep the people from coming off the skate park, and they're still coming in. I went over there. Kevin was over there earlier tonight. There was probably a dozen people on it. They refused to leave when they were asked to, so we actually called the cruiser to get them out of there. It is a construction area. You should not be in there. As nice as it looks, as good as it looks, please stay out of there till we're done. So the boards will start going up tomorrow. Take about a week. The final coating should go down after that. There may be a delay on the final coating. We are having an issue in the town with getting our thermoplastic for the lines on the streets because of COVID and because of the power lossage and the ice storms in Texas last winter. That's where all that thermoplastic comes from. The same supplier does the surface for the rinks, so there could be a delay in getting that surface. But we'll get it down as quickly as we can. We've put in place restrictions on the contractors so they don't interfere with the opening and closing of schools during the day. But we are still on schedule to finish that by the end of the month. It's probably going to be pushed on until October, I think, by the time we finish. If you get on Tac Factory, well, 17A, everything's in and up. We are doing the testing now. Once we finish testing all the equipment, we'll bring in DEP to get signed off. That returns 225,000 to 250,000 gallons of water a day back into the system with no iron, with no manganese, which, as everybody knows, is the cause of our groundwater. So that is very good news. Widow's Walk is ongoing. You get on there now, again, the parking lot's paved. The building envelope is kind of up. You can see what it's going to look like. They're working on the drainage now. The well 18, sorry, the well 18 project is just about completed. When we backwash the filters on well 18B, that backwash has a lot of iron and manganese in it. We will pump that over to the golf course. It'll go to a sediment tank. The iron and manganese will settle out, and then that water will be able to be used to irrigate the golf course. Possibly up to 10,000 gallons a day we could be putting out there. So that's good news for the golf course, and it's better than just putting that water away to waste. I think that's just about done, Kev, that project, so that's pretty good. If you go on Hammerock, the living quarters in the fire station are all framed, and most of the windows are in, so the living quarters are progressing. The apparatus bay, the walls are going up this week. We expect the roof trusses to come in and stop being put up next week. We are still on schedule and on budget down there. It will be tight, but we will have everything buttoned up in time to get that truck back into the station with the firefighters before the cold weather. So if you get down there, you see that that's ongoing. Reminder to people that the lifeguards are now off all our beaches. Hammerock was the last one, so there are no lifeguards on the beaches. So if you go to the beaches, you need to use a lot more caution, especially this week. Hurricane Larry. I just laugh when I say Hurricane Larry. It doesn't seem like the name of a hurricane.
Early.
The rest of the stooges on here. Hurricane Larry is in the Atlantic right now. It is a category-three storm, which is a pretty good storm. It is not expected to impact us directly, but starting tomorrow into Thursday and Friday, we are expecting to see increased surf on our beaches, probably some erosion, and the possibility for rip currents. So if you do go to the beaches, please use extra caution the next couple of days. There are no lifeguards, and we will see some impacts from Larry. If those impacts seem to be getting greater, we will put out additional notices over the next couple of days. Council on Aging kicked off their lunch program on Thursday. We had almost 90 seniors there for a baked barbecue chicken lunch, barbecue chicken, corn on the cob, potato salad, followed by a strawberry shortcake dessert with coffee. It was amazing. The place was packed. People had a great time. The food, I understand, was fantastic. I didn't try it, but I did help serve and talk to a lot of the residents. And exactly what I think this board envisioned when we started talking about building that and building it, really just seniors coming together, really enjoying each other's company, having a great time, getting a meal. The meals are $5, so they're very inexpensive. Every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday at noon time is lunch. You're asked to sign up two days in advance by calling into the Council on Aging at 781-545-8722, and then press zero. The menus are on the website, but for the rest of this week. Tomorrow is baked pasta with chicken and a crumb topping with fresh-buttered broccoli and garlic bread. And Thursday is meatloaf with mushroom gravy, green beans, posnet mashed potatoes, a roll in butter. It is really, I hope the board gets a chance to go up there and see one of the meals. For $5, you can't beat it, and it was just, it was so great to see so many people just enjoying each other's company and hanging out and talking, really exactly what you planned when we built this thing. So kudos to Linda and her staff and the volunteers for getting that up and running, and I hope the seniors enjoy the new setup up there because it really is fantastic. Cedar Point, the contractors backed out of Cedar Point this week. We're doing some drainage. We're raising the castings. Once that's done, we'll be back to pave Cedar Point. The plan is to pave Cedar Point now before the cold weather. That will be dependent upon the availability of the paving contractor, but we are fairly hopeful that we'll be able to get him out there, weather-dependent, wrap that up this winter and finish that project. Today is Rosh Hashanah, so we want to wish all our friends of the Jewish faith a Happy New Year. It started last night. It goes to tomorrow evening, so if you have any friends who practice a Jewish religion, Happy New Year. I wasn't able to find out exactly what year it is, but Happy New Year to all those celebrating. For the board, I think we let everybody know that we finished the Chief Justice Cushing Highway land purchase. The land on the right side, as you head towards Marshfield from Mo Ford down to the reservoir, we finished that purchase. That land is now ours. It's a general use, so the board will be able to determine what we're going to do with that. It is a place we're looking for a new water treatment plant, but we will update you as that comes on later on. The land in Citewatt Harbor, we are still waiting to close on that. That land is issued with some of the airs. They keep dying, for lack of a better way of putting it, and we have to chase down the airs of the airs, but we are getting close on that. And we have not yet closed on the Mordecai Lincoln property in North Citewatt. The town is trying to get that closed, but we just haven't been able to get the owners of that to come down and finally close on that property, so we'll continue to work on that. Last but not least, believe it or not, school starts tomorrow. So we want to wish Superintendent Burkehead, his staff, and all the teachers and students to have a good year, hoping it's a great year. But we want to remind people that the opening of school means return to students on the roads and on the buses, so you'll see students walking. You'll see them by the side of the road waiting for their bus. We ask people to be extra cautious with those people on the roads. There will be a lot of kids walking and by the side of the roads. And also remind you that passing a stopped-school bus with lights flashing is not only dangerous, it is illegal, and the police will be keeping an eye out for that. So please be extra cautious over the next couple of days as the students start returning to school in the new school year. And that's what I have for today.
Thank you. Questions? Tony?
No.
I have one. Jim, the crosswalk by the senior center, when that is repainted, you know, to go across, will that also have an electronic system, like lit system?
Not at this point.
No.
Not at this point, no.
We might want to take a look at that, though, down the road.
Yeah, I think we'll see come on how much. There is plenty of sightline where the crosswalk is going to be. It could be seen from both directions. It's just a little bit on this side of the crest.
Yep.
But there's plenty of sightline down First Parish and Beaver Dam, so I don't know if it's necessary, but it's something we'll monitor. But if you put one of those lights there, it does tend to annoy the neighbors and the abutters, so something we'll have to keep in mind. But not at this point.
I just think it'll give the seniors a lot of comfort to know that there's some extra safety precautions there. Just, I think we need to put it on our list. And then my other question was, do they anticipate 90 people every lunchtime? Or do you think that would say?
I don't think they're anticipating that many. I think this is just a kickoff.
That's great.
I think part of it's also going to be dependent upon the menu.
Yeah, sure that.
But the menu is online. If you go to the town's website, go to the Council on Aging webpage, it's on there, or in the new newsletter that the Council on Aging sent out on the calendar, there's a lunch every week, so. But, you know, really, it was fantastic to see everybody there.
Yeah, it's nice. How was all?
Good.
Okay. I have a couple speaking of the senior center. When you go to their website, all you have are old pictures of the old senior center.
I have new ones.
Really nice if we had new pictures of the new facility.
Yeah, and I know she's working with Google because when you do Google, it still sends you to the old one, and we're trying to get Google to update.
That's all you can find, is the old one.
It's the old one. We could just tear it down.
It's been months now, so.
Yeah, okay, we can get on that, yeah.
If we could get a new website with new pictures. School traffic. School starts tomorrow. Is there going to be the chaos out there tomorrow afternoon? Drop-off doesn't seem to be as bad as pickup, and as you and I talked about earlier in the week, people, people go everywhere. They, they don't follow the rules. They don't, they, it's really, it has been bad.
I think drop-off is as bad as pickup, it's just not as long a duration because they come all at the same time, so there will be traffic. Last year, it backed up First Parish to the funeral home a couple of times, so it gets bad in the morning, but it's quicker.
It is quicker.
In the afternoon, people tend to get here very early. They park all over the place.
They park out front here. They park going both ways. They, it's, it's terrible.
We had the, we had the police kicking them out of here last year. We'll continue to do that, monitor that. There will be detailed offices here. The schools are working on a plan to try to increase some stacking lanes over there. I've asked for a copy of the plan. I haven't got it yet, but they're working with the planning board on that to maybe have some more room for people to fit. I think the other thing we're hoping to see is that more kids will be on the bus. Last year, with the restrictions on the bus with the COVID, a lot of parents drove, so I think there'll be more kids on the bus, but it's going to be a work in progress for the first couple of weeks.
All right. Well, I just want to express the concern that some people have about what it's like out there in the afternoons. And finally, I would like to say that Cedar Point, I think we now can say, went very well. And so much went wrong out there. Some stuff in our control, some stuff not in our control. Everything seemed to have worked well. And I just want to say to DPW, to the town administrator, to everyone who worked on that, that it was not without its controversy, as we all know, but it's done. It's done well. I believe it came in on budget, if not under budget. And it's working, and hopefully we'll see the results of the I and I as a result of it, so thank you.
Definitely seeing I and I better, and, you know, the congratulations goes to Kevin and his staff and the soil department. As I reported before, we found laterals that weren't connected. We found laterals that were crushed. We found laterals that were connected with duct tape, and that's all huge sources of I and I. So it will take a little while to model over time what the actual savings are, but we think they're, they're great. They're actually higher than we anticipated, and I think when it's done, it's going to look, Cedar Point will look fantastic, the new road with the water and so out there. So I think it came out very well. And again, Will and his department, Kevin and his guys, and the engineers, the consulting engineer, did a fantastic job out there.
Because we always hear about what goes wrong, and when something goes really well, I just wanted to say thank you. So if anyone else?
Can I just add one thing on Karen's point about the traffic tomorrow, Jim? I know there's usually a police officer over here. Is there any way to get somebody out here for 20 minutes?
We do.
It's literally 20 minutes of chaos.
Yeah. If we can't get a detail, usually they'll pull one of the road gas off, but there are usually people at both ends.
At least the first couple of days.
Yep.
Thank you. So on to the next agenda item, which is Discuss Vote Untold Brewery Fourth Anniversary Event. Four years, I can't believe it. Are you mad?
Yes.
Come on up. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Four years.
Yeah.
Couple of them sort of tough.
Last year.
And the event is on 10/2/21, the 2nd of October, from noon time to 10:00 PM. And this is Matt Elder. And Matt, if you'd like to tell us what you're planning and?
Yeah, so we're pretty much going to try to follow the same blueprint we have the last, well, not last year, but the previous two years. We'd like to, you know, close off the parking lot and allow our customers to wander about the parking lot, listen to live music. We are getting a food truck so they can have something to eat. We'll set up tables and chairs. It's basically going to be a larger extension of our taproom. Serve, you know, all our beer, and hopefully just have some people over to enjoy the day with us. Hopefully get some good weather. Last two years, it's been a little drizzly, but third time's a charm. And we are going to encourage everyone to park up at the MBTA parking lot. That's what we've utilized the last couple of years, and it's been fine. It's a three-minute walk down Stockbridge.
Is that parking lot still available?
The lower lot is. Yeah, not the upper lot anymore, but the lower lot.
The lower, the lower lower, or the middle or the upper?
Yeah, right. As you're heading towards Driftway on the right.
Near the train.
Yeah, near the train.
Near the next to train, correct. So we've done that the past couple of years, and that's worked really well.
And the MBTA doesn't have a problem with that?
Yeah, no. No one parks there on the weekends anyway, really, so there's lots of spots available. It's usually a couple dozen cars at a time. Everyone's good about carpooling. We'll put up no parking signs, which we've done already a couple of times this year for other events, for our neighbors' sake, to keep our neighbors happy, which keeps us happy. We have three bands playing throughout the day at the back of the parking lot, so usually people stay towards that end of the parking lot instead of up by the street. And food truck will be there all day as well. So that's been the blueprint we follow the last few years, and it's worked really well, so it isn't broken. We're not trying to fix it.
Oh, no, I just want to say congratulations and Matt, you know, you've got it down. He had everything in there, and I appreciate all the tips, certifications that you included. So I don't have any issues. I think we've covered a lot of the different concerns over the years, and he's continued to address them. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Andrew?
No concerns either. I mean, pass, success, no major issues, so cheers.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, my biggest concern is the parking, and if you keep that under control, then that's good. You know, people will just park right on, all the way down to the, the bridge there, so. And that makes Country Way very narrow there on that turn, so.
Exactly, yeah.
If you can put cones or something out there so people don't.
No, we'll have cones, parking signs. I did not mention, we will also have a police detail there as well, so that usually helps keep people well behaved.
So like everybody else, congratulations on your, on your success. I mean, it's, it's pretty remarkable when you came before, it's probably five years ago to start this whole thing.
I remember, yeah.
You're in every restaurant that I go to on the South Shore, and you've got a great following, and you're really, you're really, probably only met your expectations, but I think you exceeded all of ours, so congratulations.
Means a lot.
And a beautiful graphic artist, so whoever that is, I hope you're submitting some of your can designs to some kind of award. It's got to be some craft beer design award because they're beautiful.
This Friday, actually, is the Great American Beer Festival Awards. We've submitted some beers to that.
Oh, excellent, okay.
Olympics of beer competition, so.
Good. Fingers crossed.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Very good. Anyone in the audience have any questions? No? All right. We have two votes. One's for an outdoor entertainment permit, and one is for a one-day wine and malt beverage license. So if someone would like to make a motion?
Sure. Move to approve an outdoor entertainment permit to Matt Elder, Untold Brewing, Sixth Old Country Way for a special event on October 2nd, 2021, from 12:00 PM until 10:00 PM.
Second, do we need the three bands to provide live music? Oh, I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the backup panel motion. Sorry about that. Move by Mr. Goodrich, second by Ms. Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four nothing, motion carries. Very good. Next.
Move to approve a one-day wine and malt beverage license to Matt Elder, Untold Brewing, Sixth Old Country Way for a special event on October 2nd, 2021, from 12:00 PM until 10:00 PM.
Move by Mr. Goodrich, second by?
Second.
Mr. Vagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries four nothing. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Have a good event.
Joy.
Next on our agenda, our, it was an item on our agenda, Heritage Day's administrative fee appeal, but that has been canceled, and the EDC is going to pay for the administrative fee. Is that right, Maron?
Yes.
Okay. So on to board and committee meeting applicants. We have two people for the Historical Commission.
Can I stop for one second on that?
Sure.
Because when I looked at that item, so I know that we charge a fee. Every department charges a 10% fee as well for their expenses? So an administrative fee from the police, the fire, I think it was just those two, right?
I think DPW does also.
Oh, DPW.
Yeah.
I didn't know we did it with police and fire. I knew we did it with DPW because we had to deal with, with the sawhorses and stuff in the past, but that's been going on for, since the beginning of that?
Yeah.
Nancy?
Usually they would ask for a waiver of that, I think, don't they, generally?
They normally ask for a waiver when they ask for a waiver.
Right.
What did Nancy say?
What?
Didn't hear you, Nancy.
They normally ask for a waiver when they ask come forward for the event. Before we?
Right.
We have a select one meeting on waivers.
Right.
We know that. That's not, no, I, I get Tony's question.
Yeah, I thought we had kind of taken care of that when we made that policy. I didn't realize that there were still these lingering other expenses, which add up to a heck of a lot more if you have to have a police detail there for a week, you know, than, than a fee for an event.
Yeah, there's an administrative fee that bothers me a lot.
So is an administrative fee, for example, for the police above and beyond the cost of the detail?
Yeah. So our policy only goes to the permit fee?
Our policy, well, the administrative fee left. I believe that the administrative fees would stay after the back of the amendment, remain a decision on special event fees.
Right. Which does not incorporate what we're talking about here.
I don't think so.
Correct, yeah. I don't think they did either when we were talking about it. I just didn't. We may want to revisit that at some point in time, you know?
For clarity?
Yeah, maybe put a cap on it or something. I mean, wasn't one of the bills like $2,400 or something?
All right.
Thanks. Sorry for the, no, $1,300.
That's all right. So back to the applications. Mr. Whitaker, I see is here. Would you like to come up? Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm?
Tell us why you're interested in the Historic Commission.
Okay. I'm Jack Whitaker. I have familiar faces, but by way of background, before I moved to Citewatt, I was on the Natick Historic Commission, that experience, and also their Historic District Study Committee. We studied and we recommended two districts to town meeting, and they adopted them, all of downtown Natick's Commercial District and then the Commercial District in South Natick. My undergraduate major was history. I was originally certified to be a high school history teacher, but then in the army, I went into banking, went into college administration. I've had a lifetime interest in history, and particularly Plymouth County. I took a couple elective courses as an undergraduate in historic architecture. That's fascinated me for years. It's put me in good stead because at one point in my career, I was director of budget and capital planning for the mass public higher ed system. They have, the community colleges and the universities have a variety of historic buildings. Probably the most dramatic is Springfield Technical Community College. They occupy the site of the arsenal at Springfield. Judge Washington, God bless him, set up two arsenals, one in Springfield and one in Hottis Ferry, and they manufactured all of the small arms for the military up to the White Lotus, Springfield, in 1965. And we got it at that point. The federal government gave it to Massachusetts as the site of the community college in Springfield with the proviso that three buildings would be maintained as museums, and the rest of the buildings that date from the 1790s to like the 1930s would be maintained, at least on the outside in their original form. This is another, other examples. Roxby Community College has a lovely federal house, very historic. It's used as a halfway house for people recovering from drugs. My most recent job I had before I retired was as vice president for administration and CFO at the State University in the Ochs Maritime College. It's a sister college to Buzzetts Bay. It's located in what was once Fort Skylight, an 1850s fort, which ironically was designed by the Army's chief engineer, Robert E. Lee. Lee actually designed the defenses that he then tried to overcome as a Confederate general. The house that they gave us to live in was actually designed by Robert E. Lee. When I was at the University of Hawaii, I was vice president for administration. Um, when I was at the University of Hawaii, I was Vice President for Administration, we were given a building by the University of Hawaii, um, there was a great effort to try and maintain the historical character of downtown Hilo, Hawaii, and we were able to get federal funds, fought the Bank of Hawaii building, and a grant from Governor Caiutano to turn it into a small business incubator, a play, and, and we teamed up with the state's economic development people in our business faculty, and it became both a place where small businesses could come, get very affordable space, great mentoring, and, by the way, they would give us a 5% equity in the building, in the business they were trying to develop, which could be very lucrative if they were successful. Um, it was great, great, it worked, it worked, I don't want to go on a big lecture about small businesses, but people will start these endeavors without being properly funded and capitalized, they, they don't know how to market, and those kinds of things. It is, I've had an idea in my head that possibly the Old Gate School could be used for that purpose, possibly. A lot of our businesses out there were computer-based, you know, high on brains and thinking and low on space and materials. But anyway, all of this leads me, I saw in the paper there was a vacancy, and I'm generally familiar with the work of the Stark Commission, it interests me, um, sometimes these one-year moratoriums can be imposed, work, I'll just end with this little anecdote, my brother-in-law, Frank Rose, was for many years the town moderator in Norfolk, and also chairman of the school committee, and a prominent lawyer, he and his wife retired and went to South, North Carolina, they owned a building right in the middle of Norfolk Square, a mid-19th century building that had been a post office and a general store and Frank's law office. They initially had a great offer from a firm that wanted to knock it down and make it into a strip mall, but the town, the Stark Commission imposed the one-year demolition delay, which as it turned out, worked for them, doesn't always, because a woman came along who wanted to use it as a bed and breakfast, and as a place to run her scrap building, scrapbook building weekends, that was exactly what she wanted, she paid the price, and the building got preserved, so sometimes this can work. And so that's me in a nutshell, and, and my interest in this job, and.
Well, you learn something every day.
Yep.
Robert E. Lee.
You do.
Laura?
Thanks, any questions?
Um, yeah, Jack, have, we've had the same thought as you just brought forward with, you know, taking a look at Gates as an, an incubator and turning it to something like that, because I agree with you, it's a lot, some great space in there, so, if that's something that you on the Historic Commission would be eager to help kind of facilitate and, and find out how to navigate that, I think that would be a great assistance, and, you know, you've done a great job and been dedicated to the town on the Capital Planning Committee, are you leaving that?
I'm, I'm still on the Capitol.
Okay. No problem with the time commitment on both?
There isn't any conflict of mine.
Okay, okay, but thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Yeah, no, I, I actually answered the, the questions I had about, obviously, background having, uh, you know, knowing exactly what the commission is doing and what they're working on is, I mean, they're mostly detectives sometimes, trying to figure out exactly some of the different areas, and, so.
Yep, well, one more quickie, when I was in Natick, we ran a workshop called, "What's Been Going On Here?", the people who wanted to look at what had been going on at their home or their business, as you may know, there's now a wealth of original source material on the internet that can tell you just that, that story, and, uh, so, yeah.
That's great, thank you.
I know how to look up the historical house.
Very good.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just add, you know, your, your passion for the, for the subject is great, um, that's, that's half of the battle, right, wanting to do it, um, yeah, you've been on Capitol for how long?
Oh gee, six, seven years, I think, now, yeah.
Right, so you know kind of how municipal government works, to some extent, yeah?
Well, yeah, well, you know, I was on the school committee in Natick, I was on the advisory committee quite a while here in the 80s, and, um, you know.
Great, so, tell me how, so Capitol's quite different than, than the Historical Commission, like, tell me how you, how you, what your role in those two would be, because it, on Capitol, you kind of play one role, and then Historical a little bit, what, like?
Well, Capitol budget, most of us, if not all of us on the Capitol budget, have very relevant experience, uh, Joe is an assessor, you know, and, and people are builders and so forth, and our role is to advise the town, using our analysis of a particular Capitol project, is to advise the town, uh, these are the pros and cons of it, usually the old cons, once in a while, I know one of our members was spot on with the problem that, with, uh, what was going to be developed, and, uh, actually did the town a favor, got some, a problem, so, that, that's kind of what we do, is kind of predigest.
Hold on for one second, is there any way to turn the fan down just a little bit?
Yeah.
I can't, can you guys hear?
It's hard, the acoustics in here are tough, it's a. Would it help if people pulled the microphone?
Oh, sure, you, you're having trouble hearing me, how?
That doesn't help us.
Um, so that's kind of what we do, uh, is predigest, look at these using our variety of expertise, and, uh, you know, some of our membership, uh, one of you sits on the committee, or one of the school committee, it was Peter Gates for a long time, so we, we have that input too, we have a very good relationship with you all and your town manager and with the school committee, um, once in a while we do disagree, but that's kind of what we're there for, but we're strictly advisory. Now, the Historic Commission, if you look at their charge, it says you will identify, catalog, and then work to preserve the town's historical resources and their archaeological resources, looking at the minutes of this meeting, of this committee, there is a lot of cases where someone wants to do either a demolition of a house that's, or a building that's over 100 years, or they want to make a major renovation, and, as my understanding of what the committee's role is, is to first of all, look at whether that property does in fact have historical significance, or archaeological significance, and, um, if it does, it's particularly significant, they do have the authority to impose a one-year demolition delay, but what's supposed to happen during that is what I related happened to my brother-in-law and his wife, there should be an effort to see if another worthwhile use can be made, every different buyer could be brought in, and, if I come onto the committee, one thing I'll try to do is hook us up more with nationwide realtors who are in the business of marketing historic, uh, properties, they, they do exist, and, um, so that, you, you don't want to end up disadvantaging, uh, disadvantaging someone, who's got a house they want to sell, and it's actually possible you might help them, uh, but you should, if at all possible, not harm them, and, and make this a worthwhile effort if you do decide you have to impose that, that one-year delay.
Thanks, yeah, I mean, it's only.
As you know, we have some very significant properties in Situate.
Yeah, that's only one of many components of the committee, but, um, but certainly one that's very sensitive to the people, like you said, so, it's that fine balance of doing the right thing for the piece of property, but also not harming, um, the owner as well, so, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you for coming in. Next up, we have James Golinsky, also for the Historic Commission. You are, you are the author, aren't you?
I am an author.
Mr. Golinsky wrote a book about water in Situate, just published it within a couple of months ago, a few months ago, and, uh.
Springtime.
Very interesting. After I read it, I said, "The more things change, the more they stay the same, we're chasing the same problems they were chasing over 100 years ago."
Yep.
At any rate, so, would you tell us about yourself?
Okay, um, I'm an historian. I have several degrees in history, three master's degrees, uh, and I taught history at, uh, Severance Brothers High School in Westwood for 41 years, first Catholic school I ever set my foot in, and assumed I would just get a little experience and move on, but, great place. Um, I also would like to give a shout-out, uh, too bad he's not here still, to Matt Elder, uh, for, uh, I don't know how many people know that Untold Brewery preserved a former fire station, I also wrote a book on the history of the Situate Fire Department, uh, and Schoolhouse, uh, which is their taproom, uh, so, uh, I know, at least one of the partners in there is a local Situate person, and they, they did that very conscientiously, and they did a great job with that, so, one example of, uh, historic preservation, I guess. Um, since I retired, I've done a, a lot of volunteer work, uh, in the, in the town as a research assistant at the Archives with Betty Foster initially, and now my neighbor, Jody McDonough, uh, and also at the Historic Society. Um, I used to go in a couple days a week before it closed for COVID, uh, and, uh, they've started to reopen, uh, currently working on a, uh, an article, which may be part of a bigger project on, uh, the temperance reform movement in Situate before, uh, the Civil War, uh, even though we have one of the highest per capita, uh, ratings of consumption of alcohol now, uh, Situate used to be one of the leaders of, uh, the temperance movement, actually, in the 1830s and 40s. Uh, so, um, I actually got, uh, an email from another local historian, Lyle Nyberg, many of you may know, and he said, "Inform me, there was an opening on the Historic Commission, thought I should be interested in that," and so, uh, I contacted Doug Smith and talked to him on the phone, and, uh, actually attended, uh, as an observer, one of their meetings, uh, just to see what it, uh, was like to be on the commission. Uh, so, filled out application, and, uh, here I am. Uh, so I, I certainly don't have the experience in the municipal government that the previous, uh, interviewee has, but, uh, I am an historian, I'm very interested in preserving, uh, cities and towns' histories from when I lived in Dorchester, and one of the historic neighbors who's there, Wellesley Park, uh, and Hingham for, uh, 10 years, where I lived in a 1699 house, a John Beal house, uh, and was on the, uh, Hingham Historical Society as a, a member of the, the board, actually, uh, and, uh, had my house in a house tour in Hingham, uh, a few times, and, uh, I know that's something that, uh, the commission is starting to think about perhaps doing here, uh, is, uh, getting house tour together, and, just to let people know that we do have some historic properties, uh, in, in the town. Uh, one thing I've discovered, uh, through working in the, in the Archives and the Historic Society is that there aren't a lot of people in town who really understand the, the great historical tradition that this, this town's had, uh, and, when I was living in Hingham, I didn't really think of Situate as being as an historic and historic town, as, as it turns out that it, that it is. I mean, Hingham, quite honestly, has done a great job at preserving many, many, uh, old properties in, in town, uh, Situate doesn't have as many, uh, as, as Hingham, and there are lots of reasons for that, but I would certainly like to, to see the ones that we have recognized, uh, preserved. Uh, also, uh, just a personal experience for me, uh, I'm a walker, I walk all over town, uh, and, uh, I just remember soon after I moved in, I was walking down Anne Vinyl, which has several old houses up at the upper end near, uh, Man Hill Road and, and Tilden, uh, and there was this great 18th century colonial house, uh, about halfway up, uh, Anne Vinyl, uh, and I went away on, uh, vacation or for a conference or something, and I came back and I hadn't walked up Anne Vinyl for two weeks, and the house was gone. And I said, "How could they possibly have torn that thing down?" And then, soon enough, two other new houses were put on the property, uh, and, uh, it kind of, it really bothered me, that, that that meant it allowed to happen, uh, so, restoring and, uh, making sure that we preserve the houses that we do have in town, uh, is something that's, uh, really very important to me, uh, and that's certainly a big part of the job of the Historic Commission, is really to identify the historic properties that we have, and they've, they've made a lot of progress on that, that's right, with the help of Lyle Nyberg, actually, uh, who's catalogued a lot of those, those houses, so, part of the commission's work, a real important part, is just identifying the historic resources that we have in, in town and trying to preserve them. Um, so, that's essentially why I'm interested in, uh, being on the commission.
Thank you. Andrew, any questions?
I, have you, um, I, I love your background as an educator, because one of the things I've talked to the commission a little bit about is kind of integrating, our history is our story, and you need great storytellers, um, and I know there's, there's some attempts to, to kind of bring in the Historic Commission to some of the younger grades in our schools, but, for the high school level or other, or other levels, a lot of other towns do it, they did it, I grew up in Easton, they used to do that, your last class you would take before you graduate was learn the history of the towns, and when you leave, you remember to fall in love with it, um, and there's something interesting about that, because we're talking about, um, educating folks and talking, because if people don't remember, you have to tell the story, so do you have any thoughts on, um, the good, the bad, the ugly, and some sort of an, of approach like that, or?
Um, well, as a former, uh, social studies chairperson of the History Department, and as, uh, the president of the Severance Academic Council, uh, unfortunately, there's only so many minutes in a day, uh, and it would be great if every high school, or even, uh, middle school, or even lower schools could, could have a course in, in local history, uh, but practically, it would be really tough, uh, to do, uh, but I would love to see the, uh, US history teachers, uh, in, uh, Situate use a couple of my books to, uh, have students get familiar with local history, they're very readable and they're short, uh, and I'd be certainly glad to come in and, uh, give some, some talks, which I, which I actually do, uh, uh, for both the Historic Society and, uh, actually for the Northern South River Water Association, which, Association, which I also wrote a history of recently, um, so, it'd be great to have local history in the curriculum, uh, but I don't want to say that it's something that might happen.
Okay.
Tony?
Yeah, I'll just briefly, you know, I agree with Andrew, your background is spot-on, um, as I mentioned before, I think the passion is what really makes people really successful in these types of committees, someone that, you, you want to go to the meetings, and you want to be involved, and you do stuff outside of the meetings, and it, it seems like you have all that, so, um, you know, I think you'd be a great candidate for the position as well.
You can expand the committee to, to six people.
Well, the one thing that we always say is, many times we get more than one good applicant, and, we, we definitely involve people, I mean, uh, you know, advise people to get involved, even if you're not on the committee, you, they'll, all the meetings are open meetings, they'll listen to you, your ideas, whether you're, whether you get a vote or you don't get a vote, but, um, um, in this case, are there two posi, is there an associate position as well?
Two, one associate and one full, like, is that right?
The county's asked that you consider making one associate position.
So adding an associate?
He has an associate now, uh, and he can open another associate, because he's been on the unit for the next couple of years, we'll do about two people.
Yeah, it's nice to have that bench.
So adding, uh, an associate, so there's two.
Okay.
It's not a model, so it doesn't need a model change.
Right. All right. Well, Mr. Golinsky, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate your passion for the history of the town. I actually had heard at one point that Situate owns more historic buildings than any other town in the Commonwealth, including the city of Boston, because a lot of historical properties are either privately owned or owned by foundations, associations, friends of, et cetera, so, um, that was a little factoid that stuck in my head at one point, the town actually owns historic properties, which a lot of towns don't.
That's a true historic society.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're a model.
Yeah, so, thank you. Uh, next, Erin Hurd, Beautification Commission.
You're looking to a client.
No, Ms. Hurd?
We do not hear about her, it's like a little.
Okay. David Dunneen, Waterways Commission. Mr. Dunneen?
Good evening.
Welcome.
How is everybody?
Very good. Would you like to tell us about yourself and why you're interested in the Waterways Commission?
Sure, my name's David Dunneen, I live on Tilden Road, I've been in Situate for over 20 years, uh, my wife Paula, uh, born and raised here, there's may, there may be a guy in the second row that might be related to me, but, I don't know if, uh, Mike. Um, I have a daughter, Elizabeth, uh, she works around town down the Village Market and over at Roat, and I have a son who's starting the eighth grade tomorrow, so, uh, uh, some, a little more personally, um, I've been very, uh, I've been an advocate of rescuing endangered sea turtles, uh, along Cape Cod Bay for the last six, seven years. Professionally, uh, I'm a former 30-year licensed airport manager in the state of Massachusetts. Hi, Andrew, nice to see you again.
Yep.
Uh, we do a lot of different types of, uh, work advocating, uh, for aviation, uh, educating people about aviation, uh, I continue to foster that relationship, uh, both on the state, local, and, uh, regional levels. Today, uh, with the Waterways, uh, I have been sailing most of my life, uh, recently, I've been sailing on Big Fish with Greg Morse now for probably about six years, on and off, uh, I have, uh, sailed exclusively up and down the east coast and competed some high levels, currently I've got a 17-foot whaler that I like to bomb around and, uh, and, uh, explore and have some fun with, and I'm teaching, uh, David how to, to run it now. Um, it, uh, the ocean's very, been always very, very important to me, I like what happens to it, I think what I can bring to, uh, the Waterways Commission is my, uh, my expertise and my knowledge of working with, uh, local, state, and federal governments, uh, understanding how they work, and how to try to promote, how to try to bring in grants, uh, understanding where some of the, the grants are, um, I've worked. I've worked very exclusively with a lot of our state reps and state senators, as well as our congressmen. So understanding how they work and what we need to do when we're trying to solicit additional money or grants for projects is very important. I've been spending quite a bit of time watching the current board and seeing how they operate, and I find that they are a very well-run organization. Not just saying that to Mike, but you can really see that the members bring a lot of value and they bring a lot of different ideas and opinions to the board. And I think that's something that I could do. I think with my knowledge and my skills, my skill set would give me the opportunity to really help that group continue to grow and learn and foster good pieces for our community, as well as making sure that we're open on how we work on different issues. And I thought it was very, very clear at the last meeting last week that it's very important about being transparent and being open about how they run the board. And to me, that's very, very important, and that's something that I would also bring to the table. I think that's me in a nutshell. I really enjoy our town. I want to be able to give back. The only other thing I can say is I was on the Public Building Commission here back in the 2003 to about 2011. 2011, I was the chairman of the board. My job changed a little bit, so I had to step away. But to me, it's always about trying to help your community, and that's what I'd like to be able to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. More?
Sure. Great background. So thank you for stepping forward, and I agree with you. It sounds like your experience working with federal, state, and local officials will be critical as we continue to get grants to improve the harbor. So spending a lot of time on the harbor as you do, what is something that you see from, you know, your perspective that you'd like to accomplish when you're on the committee?
The biggest challenge that I see is that unfortunately, the harbor's getting shallow again. It's a very large commercial port between Situate and Marshfield. It's one of the largest commercial ports in the state. It brings a lot of economical input and it brings a lot of money in, it provides a lot of jobs. So it's important that we keep our waterways open. I think that's one of the biggest challenges. I know that right now, Situate and Marshfield are trying to figure out how they're going to move forward with some planning. And I just think that we need to make sure that the harbor is accessible. The other thing that I've already sent letters to all of our elected officials on the state level and federal about losing the seasonal Coast Guard station. It's a very, very important aspect of what we do in keeping people safe. And when you've got, you know, over 2,200 boats, both pleasure and commercial, that operate between, say, Cohasset, Marshfield, and Situate, that's a lot of people, and we need to have that coverage. Without that, I mean, that's critical time. And not saying that our harbor master and our police departments don't do a great job, but they can only go so far. And having that expertise, especially if you're out a little bit farther in Cape Cod Bay, it's crucial that we try to keep them here in Situate. So I encourage everybody to write, to send emails to our state and our federal leaders and let them know how important this is to us.
Thank you for that shout out. We couldn't agree with you more on that. And I think you'd be a great candidate, so thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, your background is wonderful, and we've talked and seen the demonstration what you've done at the airport and helping provide some safety for our beachgoers and having some extra eyes up in the air is always important.
Yeah, we didn't talk about our shark program.
That's right. And it's just, but seeing you able to kind of interact and work with other folks is really, it's nice to see, so I think, wonderful.
Tony?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. You did a good job explaining your interest in it. Your background is relevant, and you enjoy, you know, you enjoy the things that that committee is in charge of. So I think you kind of check all the boxes there.
Thank you.
I do have a question for Lorraine, though. I just want to understand the openings. It looks like there's one full-time opening, but there's one associate that may want to go up to that role?
Yes, they, I remember since I served as an associate for a number of years, that they would like to move off to the full member position, and then they would, that would create an associate.
So there's one opening on both the committee and the associate?
To piggyback on Tony, is there anything in our bylaws that prohibits us from adding associates, just as liaison and attending the meetings and speaking with Mike? You know, there are some folks that are going to start thinking about leaving?
I'll go take a look while we're.
Okay, because if we could have more than just, well, we have one associate, two associate positions?
We have two.
We have two, right?
I'm pretty sure.
We have some turnover, we'll be able to have some turnover in the next couple of years.
Yeah.
I possibly have a third.
Third.
So we have better ways to be able to handle these.
So is it Mr. Haley who's currently an associate who wants to move us?
Mr. Haley, correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, I thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll be voting tonight.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I wait for Lorraine?
No.
No. Mark Deveraux, is Mark Deveraux here?
Mark Deveraux.
I think that's the name, isn't it?
TJ Malvesti?
Malvesti.
Oh, all right. I'm sorry. Yeah, I see it now. I just jumped down. You must be TJ.
I'm TJ. Good evening.
Good evening. Would you like to tell us about yourself and why you're interested in the Waterways Commission?
Absolutely, I'd love to. I just retired after 30 years of Coast Guard service. I retired out as the commander of Coast Guard Station Point Alaton and also the seasonal unit here that's under discussion here in Situate. Been on the water all my life, grew up in Gloucester, lobstered commercially, recreationally, and have always had a passion for the ocean, obviously, through my Coast Guard service. Well-versed in all marine affairs, from pollution to response to aids to navigation to fortification, to adaption, to different strategies on how to harden and make, you know, waterways viable, both from, you know, economic standpoint, as well as from a, you know, a citizen wanting to go for sail standpoint. So a lot of experience, a lot of background, and certainly, you know, after 30 years of service, it's almost in me where I want to continue the public service and giving back. We moved to Situate three years ago, and this is where we're going to stay. We chose this as our retirement place, so certainly would like to get involved. And I'm a recreational boater, just like a lot of us. Both of my children are on the water through Situate rec sailing. So not only have I been on it professionally in the course of my duties, but also as a user of the harbor as well. So excited to get involved any way I possibly can.
All right.
Well, thank you for your service in the Coast Guard. It's dangerous.
It is dangerous, it's fun.
It's exciting.
It's very exciting, but I think the service has set us up for success as far as keeping us safe and having measures, risk assessment measures, and all the gear that we have to keep the gals and guys out there safe when they're on the water, so.
Well, thank you. More questions?
I do, I'm going to ask you the same question.
Sure.
You know, as a user of our waterways, what do you see as being one of the more pressing issues that the Waterways Commission should address in the upcoming years?
I think it's going to be the sustained growth over the next couple of years. Back in May, the National Marine Manufacturers Association put out a report projecting the growth of people wanting to be boaters, wanting to buy new boats, the used market. And it looks for the next two to three years, the post-pandemic surge of boating is going to continue. So I think that the town needs to continue to adapt to that surge and also be prepared for when that wave is, when we're on the other side of that wave, how we can sustain the harbor in the most economical manner possible. So I think that is probably going to be our biggest challenge in the coming years. And that, of course, you know, with Station Situate potentially closing, the harbor master, the chief of police with the marine unit, and of course, the fire chief with the dive team, very, very capable. But I think if we do lose Situate, there has to be some planning involved, Station Situate, in response measures going forward to serve the town.
You'd certainly be a good advisor for that, so, thank you.
Probably no.
Yeah.
Andrew?
I'm just, I'm so impressed at all these different folks who are so accomplished and really just step forward. We are very, yeah, we're very lucky. I think you can be a great candidate. And again, that vision to look forward years down the road. No questions?
I think that's the biggest thing I've seen in, I was on Nantucket for a while. They were adapting to some of the changes with the tourism. I was out there during '08 when we started to see some of the tourism start to go away because of the economic crisis. So the town was, you know, faced with, okay, we depend on this amount of, you know, transient moorings, how's that going to affect? So I think a strategic plan for when things do taper off a little bit is certainly in our best interest.
Good point.
Yeah, just now, I'll piggyback on tomorrow. You mentioned adapting to, you know, an increased volume of boaters. Give me like one idea, what's something we're going to have to deal with?
I think a couple of things. We've done huge improvements to Cole Parkway. And I know that there's a plan with, after the pilings, we're looking at some new floating docks as well. I think we're going to see an increase in people, and you can hear them on the radio calling, hey, I need a pump out. We could maybe look at a different pump out station, someplace else to try to, in the harbor, maybe at the, I know one thing was being talked about, maybe at the boat ramp, Jericho Boat Ramp. I think that's going to be something to look at, too, is how are people going to, you know, the transit, the amount of transits we have, how are they going to, you know, get to shore, get rid of their waste, and what services on shore can we provide as a town to make sure that they feel welcome and they want to come back, you know, and spend money to reserve a moor, whether it be through any of the mooring services in the harbor?
Great. Thanks again. As Andrew said, just great qualified people, so we can't make a bad, we can't make a bad choice.
No.
Excellent.
It's true. All right, thank you for coming in.
Well, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Over there? And now I've got Brian Cronin.
So, I did my answer to your question.
Okay.
So we only have nine members, one of whom should be the harbor master. Because no one has assessed that you want to appoint.
Great.
So if you wanted to appoint two of you, you could appoint two of them.
That's awesome. It's good to know. Correct.
There could be a succession for future open positions.
Right. Perfect. Thanks, Lorraine.
Yep.
Karen, before we go on.
Yes.
TJ, you also wrote on your application that you're interested in coastal advisory?
Yes, sir. Obviously, the waterways is very passionate about, but also the challenges that we have in the coastal grounds, or the flooding, climate change, are certainly something that's of interest to be explored.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we do have openings on coastal advisory, I believe.
I'm waiting to find out about two positions there. There's one open.
Okay.
And we have two, three, four applicants to talk to.
Okay.
But as I said, I'm waiting to hear on two.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Good evening.
Would you like to tell us about yourself?
Sure. So this is my second round. I was on Waterways back in 2015 to 2017. I was chairman for one year. I think I've been going to Waterways meetings since 2011. I was sitting here looking at the year or so. So my background, I was in college, I was an assistant harbor master in Situate. I was, after that, I worked in the marine trade for about 10 years. I'm a licensed captain, so a boat owner and, like I said, been, have had a lot of interest in waterways since I've worked down in the harbor. So currently have a moor in the South River and spent a lot of time down there, especially during the pandemic, working from, working from the boat. And so that's sort of my background.
So you were on Waterways before, and why did you leave?
I didn't get reappointed, so I just gave it.
That happens.
Yeah.
Andrew?
I guess, kind of, your question, did I steal it?
Take it.
What would you like to see a change or?
Um, I think, I think the kind of hit on before is dredging, dredging the harbor, finishing up the South River, and then accessibility, and also, you know, how to, making sure that the waterways are patrolled with the added, all the added boaters out there. So I think focused on education and safety of the additional boaters is just, seems to be a lot of new boaters, and just make sure that everybody's doing it safe. I think the marine unit and the harbor master do a great job now, they just need to, I mean, just continue doing it.
Right. Yeah, are you still in the maritime business some?
No, no, not anymore.
Oh, you're not. And what did you do in it? I don't, did you say?
I sold boats, I sold boat parts, boat paint. Yeah, I guess that was it.
Involved in actual.
It worked, it worked in a boatyard for a while, so.
Great, yeah. Again, you've got experience having been on the committee and background and passion to do it, so another, another strong candidate. You know, I think all of you would serve well.
Yeah, and Brian's, he attends several of the meetings. He's never really stopped paying attention, even when he wasn't reappointed in 2017. So his passion has always remained high, and he's, I think he's continued to provide some good input to the committee over the years, so.
Thanks.
I'd welcome him back.
Okay. Here's an endorsement for you.
Thank you.
Now, while we have all three of them here, so there's only one opening, are you, all of you interested in an associate position if that became available?
Yes, sir.
Good, good. All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, Charlene Richard?
Can I say one more thing, only so we can make this easier? TJ, would you be more interested in an associate position or being involved in the coastal advisory?
I think if, associate would be great if there would be potential, and there's going to possibly be one to.
Okay. Great. I just want to make sure as we make our decisions, we've got the.
That we put you in the place.
The full landscape. Thank you.
So, Charlene Richard?
Hello.
Have you heard the questions? Would you like to tell us about yourself and why you're interested in the Coastal Advisory Commission?
I'm pretty much, well, almost a lifelong resident of Situate. My family moved here in 69. My father, parents were business owner in town. My brother is currently a business owner in town. I took the route of going to school and teaching at Situate High one year, and that was the year that probably two and a half came through. So I obviously couldn't keep that job, and I went into Boston and worked in the financial industry. Over 30 years there, I always gladly commuted back to Situate. I feel strongly about the town, and I'm sure I'll be here forever. I am a former sailing enthusiast, a lot of racing out of the harbor, PHRF, even the frostbiting in the winter. And more recently, my husband and I had a 36-foot grand banks that we've enjoyed as sort of a cottage, you know, traveled around from Long Island to all over the coast. I had retired and looking to get more involved, and when I heard that you were looking for people to help, basically, that's why I'm here. I was also recently asked to join the Historical Commission Endowment Society, which would be perfect with my background in finance. I was a fixed income bond trader for 30 years, so I'm looking forward to helping them. And that's about it. And I agree with many of the comments these people have made about what needs, you know, what the concerns are, even if they're on a different committee. The environment is particularly of worry. I live where I can see the harbor from the house. I live at the beginning of Bevedem Road, so I have watched the storms and I have watched the flooding, and I, you know, I'm right there.
So I know more about coastal advisory, maybe you want to?
Sure. Thank you, Charlene, for coming forward. So we have one opening, right, Lorraine?
No, it's not clear, right?
I'm waiting for two people that are currently on the board to get back to the position.
Okay. But Louise stepped down, so, yeah, yeah. Okay, so at least one. Okay, great.
We may have two other openings, but I just have her back and two.
Okay. All right, so that sounds good. So coastal advisory really is about coastal resilience, right? And I think the biggest challenge has been COVID, I think, set us back considerably, not being able to meet and not keeping our $100 million identified, you know, improvement plan moving forward. So we've sort of got to step on that. So curious, just knowing that little bit of 30,000-foot overview, you know, what type of skill set do you think you could bring to the committee to help coalesce and get everybody? help coalesce and get everybody going again?
Well, there's a problem, you mean, there's a problem still meeting, getting people together?
I, I am not aware of the last time they, they got together yet. So that's, we just got a new, we just hired a new coastal resource officer. So I believe she's also getting her, her footings as well, for lack of a better word.
Well, I think my experience is not really with committees, but in management and business, I was definitely a liaison because as a bond trader, I had to deal with the sell side and buy side, you know, managers. I worked for, there was no commission involved here. It was, it was a endowments and, and mutual funds and things like that. And I was just able to, longtime career bond trader was able to make it work.
So high-paced collaborator.
Yes. Coordinate, you know, multitask, all of that.
Excellent attributes that we need. Committee like this. Do you have any thoughts about coastal resiliency? Were you clear that that's what the Coastal Advisory Commission really looked at?
Well, I tried, I, I didn't get the proper invite like to this, that, so I wasn't sure what was going to be expected of me. And I started to just read through the documents today and I haven't gotten through everything.
There are a lot. Don't worry about that.
But it's the environmental, from a personal heartfelt point, it's the environmental that is the most threatening aspect, I think. And the safety for these new boat owners as well. You know, I saw someone run aground in the harbor just this weekend and I thought, that channel's pretty well marked. What are you doing over there, you know?
Exploring.
Yeah. Not paying attention.
Paying attention.
So I just, it's just, want to help and I'm not sure exactly how.
Excellent. So Lorraine, is this, is this the committee that has the inland rep and the out? Yes. Yep. And so do you live inland or it sounds like you live on a boat?
I know. I, I see the harbor from every room in my house. Yeah, I live at 10 Beaver Dam. It's like.
All right. So you're a coastal resident. Okay. Just want to clarify that.
It's the house with the new fence. Everybody talking about the new fence.
Oh. Well, that does look good. One that was appeared after the car went through the old fence, right?
That's right.
Yeah, there you go. That warrants a new fence, Andrew?
No, I mean, to re- to re-energize, you know, a committee, it's, it's difficult, but it's needed and it's resilience, resiliency and just trying to get people, you know, the focus is not always the easiest topic because they're, they're kind of esoteric understandings of, you know, it's not just walls and putting seagrass and there's a lot of kind of moving parts. So kind of having that understanding. And if you have that willingness to kind of go through all the different aspects, because there are, it's, it's like 10 million different things you can do and what's the best, you know?
I'd be happy to be the, the fresh blood.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Sounds good. Tony?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'd add is this committee is a little bit different than others because sometimes you work very hard for something and it doesn't happen. You know, we're looking at plans that are 25, 50 years in the future. And we'll put a little, a lot of energy into it and then the neighbors won't want it or there'll be roadblocks that don't get you there. Whereas if you're on beautification, you go plant a tree and it's there. So there's a lot of work that goes into it and not always the, not always the maybe feeling of success. But it is something that's definitely needed and there's a lot of details to it. And there's a lot of, I guess, more of an educational component where you have to really explain to people that don't understand what could happen, what's going on and, and almost kind of teach them about what, what the likelihood or the possibility of stuff to occur is.
I think that's a good role for me. My degree is in education, business education. My, my experience and my career, we certainly didn't get everything right. No one does. But, you know, and it is a constant combination of things that you bring together to, to come to a conclusion about what the right investment is or what, who the right people are to get involved in that group. And I think I've had good success with that.
Yeah, and I'm not judging whether it's a strength of yours or not. I'm just, that's just my impression on the committee. Because we've all been to many, many meetings and talked to many consultants and put a lot of presentations together.
Right.
And, you know, and it's, it's, it's a report for something somewhere that, that we hope we act on. And most of the things that you want to do cost way more money than the town can afford. So it's, it's really picking those, picking those projects that can make an impact probably that are actually doable. So. Anyways, I think it's a great committee. There's a ton to learn and there's a lot more aspects, just the boating aspect, you know, there's the residential aspect, the commercial aspect. And it's got to be addressed. I mean, Rick Murray brought this up when I first started the board many years ago. And, you know, kind of got us on that channel of, hey, we're going to start paying attention to this before, before you know it, it'll be here. So. Anyways, thanks for applying.
Well, especially after what we witnessed this past week down in New York, it's time to put this back on.
Right.
Our radar, the front burner. Yeah. Well, thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. Thank you, Charlene. So I know Connor Doherty is not coming in.
He could be here tonight. He has gone and planned to get the next four meetings on sometime tomorrow.
So Mark Deveraux?
I don't see anyone else in here.
Okay. All right. So we're done with that. We will be voting at least some of these at the end of the evening. No need to stay if you're waiting for us to vote. It could be another hour or so from here. But if we vote anything, Lorraine will call and let you know.
I would like to read that. I've got a new call. One of my friend's brothers just died.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Jack. Oh, yeah. Yeah, no need to stay here. That's for sure. Thank you.
It looks like you have two positions. I mean.
Yeah, we're good. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Just glad to. All right. Discuss vote, one-year extension of school bus lease. Dr. Robert Dutch. Dr. Dutch, you look different this evening. Ms. Holt?
Hitting for Dr. Dutch this evening.
All right.
So the three-year lease for the school buses has expired. And the most expeditious way to deal with this is just to have it extended by one year. And that's what Dr. Dutch and Superintendent Burkhead did. They approached the current leaseholder and asked if they could just extend the lease for a year. The leaseholder agreed. It's for the same price for one more year. And then in the meantime, they will be going out to bid for a five-year lease on these buses. It's the same buses we currently have. Nothing else is changing. So that's what they were, we sent all the documents out to town council, asked town council if the select board needed to take a vote on the extension because they voted on the original lease and town council recommended that the board vote on the extension as well.
Do they have drivers for all these buses?
That I cannot answer.
That was going to be one of my questions too, is what does the student? How many students have signed up for the buses this year? You know, is it up? Is it down? You know, are they seeing kids come back?
I, I don't know about kids coming back. The, the fees are coming in. So.
Yeah.
I think tomorrow will be a telltale sign, depending on the traffic that comes through.
So they don't actually know how many people have signed up to take the buses?
I don't know. I'm sure they know because they would have already had to set their routes. And if they could have released some of the buses, that he would have done that when he negotiated.
That's what I was going to say. If they, if they didn't need them, they wouldn't have.
Right.
Asked for a one-up on them. Nancy, is the, the cost is the same and the impact on the shared expenses will be the same?
Yes. The cost for this particular lease is 167,000. So it's not the, it's just one of at least two or three leases that they have. This one's only 14 buses. We have about 19 buses.
Any questions from anyone?
No, it's probably not.
Not that can be answered.
They wouldn't.
No offense, Hans. That's not your fault. It's not your fault.
I mean, the buses are also very active, not just picking up and dropping, but after school.
Yeah.
Going sports.
The return to field trips, hopefully.
No, but I mean, seriously, that there's a huge shortage of bus drivers and if you don't have enough bus drivers, you might as well not have the buses. But. Well, and I was just curious, you know, what we budgeted, what we budgeted in the school budget for busing, was it the same? Do we anticipate resigning, renegotiating? Do you know that?
I know that they, they've settled all of their contracts except for the teachers. So those have all been settled. So there isn't anything that I'm aware of that is different in their contractual bargaining. I think like everyone that has school bus driver, school buses, they've been looking for drivers as well.
Yeah.
I've not heard anything anecdotally about, you know, there being a severe shortage. I did hear anecdotally that there were, you know, 47 positions that were filled. So as people have been retiring and there's been movement, I don't know where they all fall. And I don't know how many additional openings are still that they're trying to fill.
Okay.
The only thing I'd add, it's probably not the best time to buy a vehicle right now.
Don't insist.
I think that's also consideration.
The prices of everything is so high. Probably a good time just to extend a lease and.
Yeah, and the availability.
Yeah.
Right. Should I like a motion? Yes, please. Moves that the select board extend for one year the 2018 lease with Wells Fargo Equipment Finance Incorporated for 14 2019 school buses.
Second?
Second by Mr. Veniani. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Holt. Next. Discuss vote declaration of surplus miscellaneous harbor master items. Mr. Petro.
This is really just a lot of stuff. That's, there's all kinds of stuff, stuff that's been piling up at the harbor master's office. Stuff that's been left, stuff that's theirs. I know the fire pump has already been given to the DPW. They'll use that to pump out catch basins and stuff. And I think they're taking one of the generators. But this is stuff that's been basically taking up space in the harbor master's building forever. We'll put them up on our auction website and get the best price we can and just get rid of them.
Sounds good to me. Sounds like an efficient garage sale. Andrew, any questions?
No, I'm just going through the list.
Looking for something? Buy a boy perhaps?
Maura, you can replace your shackles.
What?
They've got some on the auction block here.
Let me see what you need replacing here.
The chain perhaps. Anyway, yes, Tony, do you have anything?
Mr. Veniani, would you like to make a motion?
That's my only comment.
All right.
Yes, I would. Move to approve the disposal of obsolete harbor master items in a surplus auction.
Moved by Mr. Veniani, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero.
And where will people be able to see this stuff? Jim?
We have an online auction site that we use.
Yeah, when, like, if someone's interested in outbidding Maura on those jewelry?
Yeah, it'll take us a while to get pictures of everything. So it'll take a couple of weeks at least.
Will Stephen blast it out on his constant contact list?
We'll blast it up. Yep. And he'll put it out too.
It'll be on the website, I assume.
So next. Discuss vote accessory dwelling fees. Mr. Cafferty.
Kevin should be coming in. Let me go, please.
Are we attending time? Is that why?
A little bit. Yeah, you're moving along.
He's easily watched him. He'll be coming in. Probably not the best title. It's not really for accessory dwellings. Accessory dwellings, we already require a connection fee. What happens is people will do something less than an accessory dwelling. They'll put a bathroom, a toilet and a sink in a garage building. That's not an accessory dwelling. Then they hook up to the sewer. There's no fee for that. And then later they'll come back and they'll upgrade it and we never get the fee. So it's confusing for the sewer department, what's an accessory dwelling, what's not an accessory dwelling. So basically what they're looking to do is if you're putting in something that needs a sewer connection, you pay the connection fee, period. And eliminate the confusion with the planning board and the zoning article as to what is an accessory dwelling. But the idea is if you're building something that has a water or sewer connection, there's a fee, period.
Right.
I'll say Kevin did it.
Excuse me, I may just make my comment.
This is Ms. Burbine, the chair of the planning committee?
I think it will clarify things if you say accessory use. I open your car and I can clarify.
We'll take that under advisement. Thank you. Tony?
No.
Something to say?
I do, but I shouldn't say.
All right.
It's a bad joke. Not about you, man.
Maura?
No, I'm waiting for these guys.
Okay, I didn't bring Will in. I didn't give it to sale.
Well, I didn't know if there's anything more. I didn't, well, I didn't know if Kevin had anything else he wanted to add.
Well, since he wasn't here.
The accessory drilling hookups.
Yeah, I apologize about that. So I think Jim got into a little bit how we always have an issue between building, planning, water sewer and everything else about what classifies it. There's a little bit of loophole. Some people build accessory dwellings, but they don't put the kitchen in. So then there's no way to track it through the water, through sewer and how it goes. So they don't get charged the fees and then we have no way to track the necessary lines and connect up to the property. So we don't know if it's a special source of inflown infiltration as well as source of water leaking because we don't get to check the materials that they typically use connecting the water lines. So it came to our attention. Will's been working on it. He met with the planning director, building department.
And town council.
Town council as well as your Kyle and they're also, correct?
Uh, not for this meeting.
Okay. Kyle did meet that meeting and he met with town council and asked what we had to do. Was it a complete bylaw change? Is it something that the selectmen could define what an accessory dwelling is? And, and that's why we were before you tonight, town council had said that it could be just the definition of an accessory dwelling. Any freestanding building.
Well, this is clear as mud.
It is.
Does anyone want to ask?
So, so if anybody wants a sewer hookup, then you're going to charge them the $16,000 regardless of what you're doing with it.
So this is, they've already got a sewer hookup.
Okay.
So they want to put a house, or some people have been putting summer homes or little accessory dwellings. They might have in-laws in there. They might rent them out. You see some go out to EMBs or other issues that people are, are using for, are just in-law apartments. You know, we're not sure what.
So there's a sewer going in and they're running a line off it somewhere else.
So then they've already paid their sewer connection. Typically what happens, if you're going to build one of those accessory dwellings, which is allowed, you would need to get a, you'd have to pay a half fee for the accessory dwelling. What is happening is if that's not classified as an accessory dwelling because they're not putting in, say, a stove, they wouldn't have to pay the fee. So they built the entire structure, some people have, and then we don't even know about getting a water and sewer department. And then after everybody's gone, then they have the stove or kitchen or whichever in that section and it just kind of skirts the rule. So we're looking to just try to clarify it. It is muddy and that's one of the things we've all discussed and they discussed trying to clarify it and find out what those, what they could be wanting. So. Will, did I miss anything or?
Nope, that about covers it. We have an existing fee structure for accessory dwellings. We want to be able to promote or allow those dwellings to exist in town, but we were seeking a way to better define these terms. Town council essentially recommended that we clarify these terms through an action through the select board. So we're here to help clarify those terms. That way, you know, if anyone connects additional utilities to an additional structure on site, that there's a, you know, a related fee to cover the capacity use of the utility system that's being used. So if you're connecting to sewer, you're using a little bit of sewer capacity. This fee, you know, covers the upkeep and maintenance for maintaining and providing that capacity.
And the fee is, the fee is the fee, but one of the main concerns that we have too is especially with sewer, we want to be involved with the piping, the pipe material and the quality of workmanship so that we don't have additional eye and eye problems in the future. Because if people don't use the correct pipe or incorrect, incorrectly, we've got no way to know what's going on there. And hence, we might miss something to that effect.
So, so is the issue, it's because these structures are detached and so the fear is, is that so, again, if somebody added three bathrooms to their house, they're not paying that fee?
Right.
So because it's, and there's.
Because it's detached, yes.
And so you've got to run that line and you want to make sure you can see that line under. Got it. Okay. I'm just trying to clarify exactly what we're talking about.
Don't they have to come to, oh, sorry. Ma'am, chair, may I go?
Yes, you may.
Let's talk to you. I completely understand your dilemma and I support your efforts. So let's just say that. But don't they have to come to you to get a hookup anyway?
We already have a hookup for the house.
No, I know, but to get that extension, like, don't they have to come to you to get that extension to that, that second unit? Let's not call it an accessory dwelling, right? Let's, you know, so it's my understanding that what your dilemma is, is that some builders.
So, it's my understanding that what your dilemma is, is that some builders or people may come forward to you and say that they're building a shed, and then all of a sudden they come back to you and say, "Oh, by the way, we want water and sewer service there because we put a bathroom there," or whatever it is, and then you have difficulty assessing those fees.
And it might, another situation that might occur, that's, you know, more, more honest, is the property may transfer or sell, and the new owners coming into town may not be aware of the particulars of the sewer rules and regulations for what's an accessory structure, what is assessed an accessory fee, and the new owners are just looking to renovate or increase the value of their property, and they may utilize that accessory structure to, you know, make it an apartment, make it an in-law dwelling, make it an office.
But because it's not properly defined...
They don't know to engage in the process.
They don't know to ask that, okay. So then that leads me to my second question, where is the definition of accessory dwelling? Where does that exist?
Some of the zoning bylaws.
So...
You should have a copy of it in your pocket.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I have that, I read it. So if it's in the zoning bylaws, isn't that a bylaw change to change the definition?
The bylaw, the definition remains the same.
I just want to, I don't want to do this and have it come back and bite us, that's all.
People who want to do an accessory dwelling from the get-go, go through the process, file with the Planning Board, pay the fee.
Got that.
The issue is, those things that don't rise to the definition of accessory dwelling, rather than try to rewrite the bylaw to catch every structure, it's, if you're putting in a new connection, it's a new connection fee. I mean, we do have a situation right now where one property has four dwellings on it, they're all spaghetti lines, and now the owner wants to subdivide the property. Well, you're going to put an all brand-new, that's all the connection fees, that's, but right now they're all running off one meter from the house, and it's spaghetti's out to these, these three other dwellings that are on the same piece of property. So as Will said, someone says, "I'm just going to put a, put a big shed out there, I'm going to have a little workout room, I'll put a bathroom, I'll put a gym." Couple of years go by, they sell the property, someone else comes in and says, "I, my parents are aged, I need a place to put them," they upgrade that, but they never commit for an accessory dwelling, it doesn't go back to the Planning Board, we're getting more water, we're getting more sewer, they've never paid a connection fee, we have no idea what that line looks like, what the use is, so, right now it's just going to be, if you're putting up a second building, or you have a second building, you want to connect it to water and sewer, you're going to pay some sort of connection fee, the water and sewer department's going to be aware of what the piping is, what the connection looks like, and everything's all nice done, and we get our revenues back, as opposed to what we're seeing now, where that's an accessory dwelling now, but it never went through the process, just kind of morphed into an accessory dwelling over time.
Well, this is, in my opinion, a backdoor to having an accessory dwelling without having to go through the permitting process with the Planning Board.
And without having to pay the fee.
Correct. Ms. Burbine?
I think that we are making this somebody that want to cause, and it needs to be. This is, in my opinion, this is not a bylaw change, but rather a policy change, that you can take up the word accessory dwelling.
I disagree.
And really turn that out through the building department. Now, when an individual considers a good plan, a permit from the building department to put up a garage, you know, some type of structure, that would kick off water and sewer products. It's not an accessory department, it's an accessory use.
May I have a follow-up question to that?
Yes, of course, of course.
So then I would think the Planning Board needs to edit their definition of how do I add an accessory dwelling to my house, because, in my opinion, that's how residents get confused, because it clearly outlines that an accessory dwelling is also sometimes called an in-law apartment, and can be rented to people, and blah, 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 so people aren't thinking that...
I understand exactly what you're saying, but it really goes back to the building department. And I was present when Bob was here, and we talked about all of this, and the building department felt that it was not an accessory apartment, it didn't have a stove. But then again, when you talk about there are very many different ways to cook and prepare food, and in an accessory apartment, you are preparing food. But you can build a garage, you can run down the road on Avenue, that is separate from the house. It's supposedly a garage, but it has all the equipment, and an apartment. There's another one for the garden door, it was the same thing, it was permitted as a gym over a garage, so it's a policy thing. The building department doesn't have to be concerned about whether or not it's a stove in there, but the fact that it is, a use. You are using this garage, and you are adding water to it, and you're putting a bathroom, okay, it's not an accessory apartment, but you are using it, therefore you should pay for it. That's the point. I don't think the bylaws, which is an excellent model, it's one of the best in the state, I don't think it needs to change, it's just the building department, when they issue a building permit, needs to clarify and tell the owner, whose property is building it. We have to check on sewer, and we have to check on water.
So, why would anyone go through the process of applying for an accessory dwelling permit if you can morph yourself into it by putting in microwaves and, I mean...
I agree, however, you still have to pay the fee.
Right.
Because it is a use.
Right.
So regardless of whether or not it becomes an accessory apartment, the use of this structure means you have to put a sewer in there. You can't just run it through your house. I don't think it's quite as much.
Well, where's, where's a copy of the, the policy that we're, we're editing? That's what I don't have, I don't know where we're editing.
So, I think this will be, it'll be a new policy.
Okay, all right.
Have to draft it up for you. You can't vote it as a policy, you can't vote on it in a tie anyways.
Okay.
Your policies on, adopting policies, so you have to wait another meeting to vote on a policy?
Yeah, because I don't even see, I mean, and that's the confusion, right? We don't even see what Bob sees to implement the current policy, so if we can see that, we can review it and vote on that edit.
Well, so if someone were to do one thing versus the other, the dwelling versus the accessory use, are they equally, are they equal in terms of the fees that you would have to pay? Or is there an advantage to going in the back door? It's half.
It's a half action fee.
It would be half anyway.
For both? That's her question.
It would be for both, yes.
So it would be advantageous to go in as a use versus a dwelling?
Yes, because then you'd skip that half fee.
Well, so I'm just looking at what...
Wait, wait, no.
No.
A dwelling is the same, accessory dwellings are same, as what Anne's saying. If you did a new dwelling, that'd be different.
And if I'm to use it, if you put up a garage, a garage, then you have, the use is such that you could pay the water and sewer activity.
But did you just say half?
It's half. So it'd be half for an accessory, then it's half for...
Be the same for a use or an accessory?
That's what I meant, I'm, that's where I'm trying to get to.
That's what we were asking, but this clarifies.
Got it, got it, got it. I just don't want there to be a way to avoid the accessory dwelling, all the, there was a lot of, a lot of restrictions.
Yeah.
And so, if, if, if we let people go in the other way, I just...
If you let them go in the other way, they'd still pay the fees, and they're liable to go in now anyways.
And then it would be up to the building department to say, "All right, this is kind of tipped over here into a dwelling versus..."
It just clears, it clears up, and I agree with Anne, that the building sees it, they get the permit, if they pit a permit and they want water and sewer, then they have to pay.
Yeah.
And there's no, there's no debating over whether, what they're going to use it for, it's just, yep, you got to pay.
Half water and sewer.
So the confusing here is, it says half sewer, but it, it says, is it a full water?
It would be half water also.
Okay, so we've got to fix that in there. But Maura's right, we just got to get the piece of paper that says whatever policy we're going to agree to, and close out, close that loophole.
They're removing the half water, it's a full one.
Full water for an accessory dwelling?
Yeah, although we take it as a case-by-case basis, if it's a small addition to the existing host, and all the rest of the utilities that they're going to use for, I allow them to use water for that, however, if they, if it's a separate dwelling, a separate unit, we're required to pay an action fee for non-service. And that's, really the main reason for that is, now with our new higher tier structure, if they don't do that, they're going to live in the water and wells, a loophole.
Right.
I would suggest that we try and wrap those, both those things up in this policy, that, so it's not you deciding whether it's kind of this way or kind of that way. If they're clear, we can make it for you, the user, as well. Although monetarily, you're right, if they want to keep it, they're just going to jump up a tier and pay the same amount anyways.
All right. Any questions or comments from the audience, all of us?
Anne, if I could just say, we brought Town Council in to try to make it less muddy. I know it's muddy, but we brought her involved to clarify.
Yeah, she was, she was at the table.
All right. Anything else, anyone? So we're just waiting for a follow-up, so you know that we can pick apart?
We'll get the policy, bring it back to the next meeting, yep.
That's good.
Use.
We got it, Anne, we got it.
Use.
Use.
There you go. Bye, Anne.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming in. I think Kevin's up next, yes?
Yes, Kevin and Sean, we will, we're going to do some updates on where we are with some of the water and what's going on. If anybody watched Jim's update, we're repeating a lot of the stuff that he had in his weekly update today, but we will, we will go forward. First of all, I, I want to reach out and thank the Water Department, thank Sean, Eric, all the operators, all the staff and everything, they're doing a great job. You know, we had a storm come up recently, and people, you know, think more about what we're doing on the coast and what we're doing, but as soon as we started getting the weather reports and things going up, Sean was talking to me and said, you know, "I'm worried, our reservoir is full," and we started opening the gates to release water, so that, you know, we weren't overflowing. As it turned out, I think we had 4.5 or 4.7 inches of water.
Yep.
And we had space for that water, but we still had water way over our elevation height, so that gets us nervous, with all our dams, we've got open dams, we've got the culvert at Old Open Bucket, which is supposedly the oldest culvert in the country, and we were just releasing water like crazy. I know, between all of us, we spent a lot of time over the weekend coming in, checking on the dam, and unclogging things and everything else to make sure that we have the water going. We also worked with some of the guys in the Historic Society, where they have their mill, the Griss Mill, we opened that up too, and we were letting that flow completely, just so we could get the water down. We were really worried about overflowing and going over the road there and then damage to the class, as well as people's houses, so...
Thank you.
We've been working hard to take care of that, and they really did a good job, so I want to thank them for that, and Sean for this. That being said, our reservoir attack factory, we are still 5.5 inches over its level, so we've got plenty of water, which is unheard of this time. Treatment plant's going about 459,000 gallons per day, the wells are doing 858,000 gallons per day, average demand's 1.3. I talked about the rainfall, the actual number was 4.44 inches. The construction projects are ongoing, the main focus has been to work on Old Open Bucket Road, we're trying to complete that, and the contractor has two crews on it, we kind of pulled the contractor back because they've got a stop-hold crew on Brook Street, and start running that, but with Heritage Days and the summer still here, we held them off on that, and took them both on Old Open Bucket Road, just to slow them down a little bit, because we didn't want to have that going on while everything's happening this summer. In the near future, we found we have a broken well, a dark well, a broken water gate over by Lucky Finn on Front Street, so coming up in the very near future, on a Monday or Tuesday night, we will probably be shutting the water off in that area late night and doing repairs and removing that well, that gate from service, so that we can shut down Brook Street without taking everybody out of present problems in the main line system.
Do you have to dig up the road?
We will be digging up the road.
So you'll put the steel, is it Front Street?
It's on Front Street, we'll put steel plates on it. What we'll probably do is dig it out, maybe that day or even that night, prep it all up, and then we'll do a water shutdown probably that same night. We'll work with some of the restaurants and everything else to make sure we're minimizing the good effect, and turn that around and replace that. We are not going to replace the gate, we're going to put a full piece of pipe, we're just worried it's going to blow apart sometime in the very near future, and we don't want that as a, as a fair requirement for the project.
Will there be brown water as a result of this work?
We hope not, but we would always put out the alert that there could be brown water. We, we like to say no, but, you know, we always, we'd gladly disrupt the system.
Yep. And what was the date of that, Kev?
We don't have the complete date yet, we're taking care of some other issues first. You know, on, on the Vennett Hadley Road, we have a water leak that's been going across there for the longest time, we've had a hard time getting a contractor out there and doing the actual work, so what we're doing is, we're going to bring the water, the contractor's going to supply a crew to run some new drainage line there to get the water off the road, because it's going to be, just getting worse and worse, it's coming off that hill, and we're worried about what it's going to do in the winter, so we're going to redo the drainage in that area. The only way we can get it done is by pulling, pulling the water crews in there, they're good crews, they've got a lot of crews, and we feel they can do the work successfully without causing any major problems. So that's, that's on our hit list, so probably after that, we will then schedule to do the work on Front Street, try to minimize that as much as possible. Where was I? So, as Old Open Bucket's been going on, the, the main line's connected, one of the issues we've been having with the Water Department is, Old Open Bucket is one of the main lines that feeds the well. From the well, from the treatment plant and everything else, it goes up to the water tank, we have the water tank at the top of Maple Street. That water has been rerouted now, and it goes down 3A and up Maple the other way, so we keep changing directions of where the water is. That line will not be connected and complete until we can deactivate the fold line that's in place there, because we have to keep both lines active while we're switching the services on, so that everybody has water. So that's causing some issues with our system. We also had some problems this weekend, Green Bush Area lost power, we lost power to the treatment plant, as well as quite a few, three of our wells. Now, it's not, it's one thing to lose power from the wells, because we've got generators to kick on, we also had what we believe is probably some bad electricity, it didn't come in, it came in as dirty electricity, because it, it screwed up our pump set, pump systems, we have, the electronics weren't working properly in some of the pump systems in the Water Department, so we set those, and that caused us some other problems this weekend, it was extremely frustrating. The way our pumps turn on is, they start with a soft turn, and they only turn to produce as much water as we need, as opposed to the old-fashioned ways of where they were on and off, so, they're very sensitive, and unfortunately, when we get a lot of dirty energy like that, it does cause problems, and then we lost power, so, but, the guys got everything up and running again, but it was, it was Labor Day weekend that this stuff happens.
Do we know why we lost power? Was...
One of the, I'm not sure, we had a couple of problems this weekend, one of them was two squirrels and a transformer.
Can't make it up.
No, it's true.
Can't make it up.
Do we have generators at the water treatment?
We have generators at the wells, yes.
What about the water treatment one?
Water treatment, we have a generator also.
Okay.
So that's ongoing, as Jim has been talking about, and also Sean will say, manganese levels have been high because of the amount of water that we have, for once it's working against us, and there's more organics in the water from the reservoirs. We are in the process of trying to get 17 and 18 up, but Sean's going to get into that, I'm going to let him, him take over.
Is there any earthly use for manganese, since we seem to have so much of it?
You know, I think Sean's been trying to sell it to China and say it's a redolment to be used for electric cars, but they haven't water yet, you know, we're, we're opening discussions of...
It's completely useless stuff, huh?
It seems to be.
Oh, all right.
Just some updates on current projects, thanks for...
Thanks for having me tonight, first of all. 17 update, 17A, the green sand filter treatment plant is nearing completion. We are waiting for the power company to install the electric meter to begin testing all the equipment. We will then begin preparing for an inspection from the DEP. We hope to have this new plant online hopefully this month in September, if not early October. It will bring up to 350,000 gallons of clean drinking water per day into the water system. This will help reduce the burden on the surface water treatment plant, which would be really great.
That's Tac Factory, right?
That's Tac Factory, correct. 18B, update, a residuals disposal system for the existing treatment is nearing completion there. The system will pump the backwash water from the treatment vessels to a settling tank over at Whittle's Rock Golf Course. The clean water from this tank will then discharge into the pond to be reused for future irrigation. This well will bring up to 200,000 gallons of water per day into the water system, again helping to reduce the burden on the existing surface water treatment plant. Update on the new surface water treatment plant. We are currently in the piloting stages for the design of a new surface water treatment plant. The pilot study will simulate several different treatment methods to find the optimal treatment method for our surface water. There is a focus on manganese removal as well as TTHM or total tri-hyalomethane removal, which our current treatment plant either lacks or struggles with. The study will be repeated in the winter to make sure that the treatment works in both warm environments and cold temperatures. A new surface water treatment plant will be of great benefit to the town. It'll be able to produce a superior water quality with redundancy to ensure uninterrupted service. It will also allow us to be able to rest our groundwater wells in the winter or off-season to give the aquifer time to recharge. It's a very important factor for the longevity of our wells. So that's a really great thing. One other final update, and that's the Dolan Well off of Country Way. Pump test was performed on this site by Weston and Sampson, and a full report was submitted to the DEP for review. We are currently waiting to hear back from the DEP so we can proceed with construction. And when this well is completed, it could bring up to 400,000 gallons of water per day into the system.
Good.
All very promising things. One other update I need to give tonight is that unfortunately, in August, we had another exceedance for total tri-hyalomethanes. It wasn't at the same location that it was at last year, it was at a different location. It was at the fire station off of First Parish Road.
Oh, yeah. The fire station at First Parish.
The fire, the fire department on First Parish?
Yeah, the level of chemicals were detected there. They were detected in a different location before.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I believe last year, last year it was... The Village Market, the exceedance last year. And then just some general background on tri-hyalomethanes or TTHMs. They're disinfection byproducts. All water systems that add chlorine or disinfect their water have to test for them. TTHMs form when free chlorine reacts with naturally occurring organic matter in the water, and it's time sensitive. The longer the water is out in the system, the more these disinfection byproducts build up. So the older the water is, the more THMs you're going to have. So one of four samples taken on, excuse me, on August 3rd came back at 82 parts per billion. As a reference point, one part per billion is equivalent to one penny and $10 million.
So, yeah, I don't know if you mentioned, Sean, the limit is 80 parts per billion, and it came back at 82.
That was going to be my question.
But because of this exceedance, I do have to send out a public notice to the residents explaining what TTHMs are and what the sample result was. It contains language required by the DEP, but there's also educational material included in there as well. And it's important to note that the 82 parts per billion is what's called a locational running annual average, or LRAA. That's because the DEP allows all systems to average four quarters of sampling, and that's what your number is. So the actual number at that location was quite a bit higher, it was 130. That was the actual result for that location. But it's also important to note that it all depends on where our surface water travels versus where our groundwater travels in the system, since we're a blended system. Because our ranges were from 6.2, so single digits, 6.2 to 130. So if, it's all, I mean, it's sort of a mystery that I've always wished you could solve by putting like a dye or something in the water to trace how the water works or where it goes. Usually I get a lot of questions after this notice will go out, and everyone wants to know, does their house have?
Yeah, right.
It's hard to answer that question as hydraulics change, flow changes, as Kevin mentioned, construction projects change the way the water goes through town. And then also, after we shut the plant off at night, all night long, the wells run, and that shifts where everything's going as well.
What was the date of that? Because I think it's important too, when you send out your public notice, that you may not get that notification until 30 days later. Because I do remember last year when this happened, we got a lot of pushback as to why we didn't notify residents sooner. So I think if we include in our communication why you can't, because you don't get the test back for X amount of days, whatever, so that would be my only suggestion, to make sure folks understand that you're notifying them as soon as you were aware.
We did revise the notice quite a bit from the last one that went out, from lessons learned and from, honestly, from looking at other water systems that have surface water. I looked at their websites and looked at some of the violations that they had posted and took some pieces from other departments.
So Sean, what could you have done to have this not occur?
That's a good question. The rain, this summer's weather has been a blessing and a curse. We've consistently gotten rainfall, so we haven't had to pump nearly as much water out of the surface water treatment plant as we have in previous years. However, the organics in the water are almost twice as high as they were a year ago. We know this from the testing that we do every month, raw water and finished water at the treatment plant. And my chief operator in over 10 years has never seen the numbers that we're seeing now. He on rare occasions would see a teen number, maybe a 13 or 14. We're in the low twenties right now.
So just to explain, that's the organic content of the water, how much organics are in the water themselves that we're treating. And the treatment plant's actually been doing pretty good because I think you're telling me it's between 73 and 83% removal?
Yeah, they require that you, as far as your organics go, the monthly sampling I was just talking about, all surface water plants have to have at least 50% removal. For the month of August, we had 76% removal. For the month of July, we had 81% removal.
The average citizen's going to get that note, and they're going to say that my water is toxic, right? There's something in there that I don't want my kids drinking. And what's our reply to how, again, how could, did we use too much chlorine? Did we not use enough chlorine? Like, if you knew that that was going to happen, could you have changed the way we process water so that we stayed below that limit?
Unfortunately, the way that the plant is flawed by design, meaning we have two spots where we put in chlorine to kill viruses and to kill anything in there. That's, the first place it goes in is in the sedimentation basins, and that's not where you should ever be putting chlorine. That's because that's where all your organics are. That's where you're trying to get everything to settle out. So by design, the plant is flawed. Now, when the organic, organics are lower, we can stay in compliance. We just had such a spike that after our last MCL violation last year, we installed tank mixers in both tanks to help mix the water, and it helps to aerate it. And because tri-hyalomethanes are VOC, they'll disperse into the air, and that helped us greatly. The previous three quarters, we were not in any violation. Our numbers were very good. This quarter, August, is always the hardest month for surface water treatment plants.
Can I say something on that also, Sean? So one of the things, Tony, that we're looking at doing, and we're talking about scheduling, is changing our organic carbon. We have carbon that runs through filtration system. Typically, the carbon can last five to seven years. And we're on probably about...
We did it in 2017, a full replacement.
So we did a full replacement less than four years ago. We're planning on doing it again. We're going to do the carbon earlier. The carbon does a great job of filtering everything and getting it out in carbon deteriorates at the time. We're going to do that early and see how that works also with filtering any of that stuff out, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but again, what do we, what happened? And what, like, is this just every time we get a lot of rain and the water gets warm and a lot of stuff grows in it, we should expect this?
This amount of rain this year, yeah. It, like I said, my chief operator had never seen numbers like this before. To give you an idea, in 2020, it was 11.5 milligrams per liter. July 2020, July 2021, 21.2. In August 2020, it was 11.6 milligrams per liter. August 2021, 21.7. The numbers are so large that even though we're getting pretty, pretty good removal rates, given the age of our treatment plant, 76% removal, there's still enough getting out into the system that it's reacting with chlorine and making these disinfection byproducts. So having seen the numbers, the numbers come in for the total organic carbon before you get your THM results on the same month, and I'm pretty surprised we didn't violate in more locations, given the numbers I see.
Is part of the answer that we, the answer is we need a new water treatment?
That is the answer. Yep.
Right, because, tell me if I'm wrong, but if you had a DAF system, if we had this years ago, this problem would go away. So if we build a new system, this problem goes away. And we'd finally be able to filter out manganese at our, which we don't, so that problem would go away. So the answer is we need a new water treatment plant.
And the town of Falmouth, who used to violate, every quarter they'd violate the THM, MCL. We toured, Jim and Kevin and I toured their new surface water treatment plant. After they brought that online and they flushed their system, they have single-digit TTHMs in their system now.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what Ann is saying, but that's five years away.
Right.
Right, so what are we going to do for the next five years?
The carbon will help us for the coming year. It may be something that we have to do more often. We also have money to put more advanced mixing systems in our tanks. That got appropriated. We haven't been able to do it yet because to do it properly, you should take the tank offline. And you all know we have a problem taking a tank offline here in Situate, so I am working with them to see if they can do it while it's online, but it's going to be more expensive.
Well, my fear is you're going to be over this number. If you just had the high quarter now, and it's a four-quarter rolling average, you're going to be dropping off loan numbers and keeping that high number.
The next time we sample is in November, and by then, usage will be down and we'll have two more groundwater sources online. So I would expect that we'll be back in compliance in November because we're going to have lower numbers.
Right, but will the average be in compliance?
That's the question, is whether the average, because it's an 82, the last violation we were in 88, and we were able to get that down the following quarter. So an 82, I'm hopeful that we can get that number down as well and be back in compliance.
More questions?
Yeah, this is to the, back to the treatment plant. I don't know if you want to stay on this before we, so, I mean, could you say more? How is that going? Is there, have there been issues that have come up? Are we still on track with?
We're moving along. They were surprised.
We're still with the DAF system.
They said it's one of the dirtiest waters they've ever encountered.
Dirtiest?
Yes. Dirtiest coming out of the reservoir and they, with the manganese. They said the DAF system may not be applicable because of the amount of manganese that's in the well, we may have to do some, or in the, not in the wells, in the reservoir itself that's coming out from the water that we're seeing now. They may have to come up with some hybrid ideas where it's more traditional and might incorporate some DAF, or it's still kind of fluid on what they're doing with the testing. So you're testing, how many different types of filtration?
It's six different weeks where they were going to do different scenarios of treatment. They've paused it now because we're waiting for some different equipment to come in so that we can pilot some settlers, tube settlers. Basically, in the time, they came out and they took six buckets of our raw water to take to their, back to their lab to test it. And then passed forward three weeks, when they started building and constructing and piloting, our water, the color of our water went from low 100s to up into the 400s in color. The water became vastly different in that time period due to rainfall and organics coming in from runoff.
Vastly worse.
Yes, vastly worse. And they didn't expect that, but they still tried to see if they could get the DAF to work, and they were just unable to get, they were able to get it to work, but they weren't confident at that, that high of a load, that this was a good direction to continue going.
Are they going to be able to make the determination if they can do a passive type system from this as well?
That's, that's what we're, that's what they're telling us, that they could still work with it. And they will also say, we have another round of tests to do in the winter.
Winter time.
Right. And that's why we're doing the pilot testing now. And when they do pilot tests and come up with their conclusions, that also has to be reviewed by the...
Right, and so the passive should really, okay. All right, I was just, okay.
I have a question. I know you've told us this in the past, but what percentage of our water supply comes from the reservoir and what percentage comes from the wells?
Nice, easy question. Does anybody have a calculator really handy? Ann's going to do it right ahead.
Okay, Ann, give me that.
So one third comes from the treatment plant, two-thirds come from the well. So we have 450,000 gallons per day from the treatment plant. The wells are pumping out 850,000 gallons.
Currently?
Currently, as of yesterday.
Okay.
So I guess we take 459 divided by 1,317 and I'll leave it on that.
And the reason why I was asking that is just because of the, if they said that it's the dirtiest water they've seen coming from the reservoir, right? It's not, that same presence isn't everywhere in the wells, correct?
That's pre-treatment. We get...
Right, no, 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 I know it's pre-treatment, but that's, and that's where my head is going, right? Like, what's causing that? Is it the rainwater? Is it the terrain in the reservoir, right? Because it comes from natural resources and just curious.
Because our inlet is in Old Oak and Bucket Pond and not really coming from our reservoir, most surface water treatment plants pull from the reservoir. Very kind of different in that we release the water from the reservoir down into Old Oak and Bucket Pond.
So it's getting dirty from the Old Oak and Bucket Pond?
It's getting dirty as it comes down. I've taken samples coming right out of the reservoir, and then I've taken a sample in the river coming down, and then obviously our raw water. And you can just see it deteriorate as it comes down.
So is our goal to have a more direct access just to the reservoir?
That's part of the design study as well as looking into a whole second intake.
And we kind of, you know, I don't want to speak for Sean and correct me if you disagree, but I kind of think we did it to ourselves because when we took Tac Factory pond offline, we're going directly into the system. We knew that well had heavy iron and manganese. It pumped Old Oak and Bucket. It was always manganese sand, but that was also a source of additional manganese for 20 or 30 years of pumping that water into it. Maybe 30 years of that?
Yeah. 30 years, I think, that well. If I could give you just an example.
And when people go by there, you saw it looked like the Grand Rapids coming down there with the wires.
That's our raw water. That's our raw water coming into the system. Thanks, Sean.
Well, soon we can get that done. Any other questions, observations?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for listening.
Appreciate it.
You know, we could go on and on about a lot for the rest of the night.
Yes, we could.
And we'll have Will back.
The good news is the plan is in the works, so...
Next meeting, we'll have Will back to give us an update on our Oceanside INI study, so...
Oh, good.
You have that ready?
Great. Thanks, Sean. Thank you, Kevin.
Nancy's back. Debt management of capital needs.
I will give the board three options. One, we can move forward with the presentation. Two, we can delay the presentation because you have three meetings this week. And three, you have the option of doing everything else in your agenda and circling back to the presentation at the end because you're running ahead. What is the board's question?
We can have a stop for the presentation, assuming you will be the first.
How long's the presentation?
It's depth, so I love to talk about depth, so we're talking 30 to 45 minutes. Depending on your input as well. And then we just moved down to a three. We just tell them, let's do this.
Appreciate that. So, this is a 45-minute presentation?
I think with your questions, yes. It's up to you. It's 30 slides, it's in-depth.
All right, we do have two more meetings this week, and I thank you for...
Options?
Yes. Is there any pressing need to do it tonight? I'm a little hesitant to put it off. It's quarter of nine. We don't have a lot left after that, other than assigning the town meeting article. So, I guess it depends on how the rest of the board feels about it. We're gonna be in meetings, two hours at least tomorrow night, two hours at least on Thursday night. And then we have an extra meeting next week for voting. So, and we have the retreat coming up.
And one of the reasons we put it on this meeting was so that you would have it for the applicability to the financial policies for that discussion. But you have the presentation in their backup, so you could just look through it and see some of the data that's in there that would, that overlaps with financial policies. So, I just don't want to kill you knowing that your week is going to be a tough one as it is.
Reader's Digest version, I think, would be nice, but just to know a little bit more, but I don't want to...
I can give you the highlights in 10 minutes.
Well, I was just gonna say, it might be useful to do that. And if the board wouldn't mind not asking really complicated questions. Tony, Mara, where's Karen Cantfield? Andrew? I mean, I think that's what I would like to see, let's just go through it, not get into...
Then we can ask questions at the 9:21 meeting.
Right.
Or whatever that one is.
I would suggest, we've all looked at the slides, so you don't need to read everything on every slide.
Yeah.
And even if we get 15 minutes through it, it's 15 minutes less than a later meeting. So, you've got 15 minutes.
Use it wisely.
So, tonight, we're just gonna take a very quick spin through our current situation as it pertains to our overall debt perspective. The last time we did this was in April of 2009, for those who are watching at home. One of the things we are gonna touch on is financing for the water treatment plant, options and impacts. So, this is just how our debt breaks down. Right now, we have about 119 million outstanding in principal. We expect to pay down 9 million this year, so we have a rapid amortization. And this is when it will all be fully retired. So, all of the 119 million that's currently outstanding will be fully retired, being paid off by fiscal '41. And in some enterprise funds, such as the Gulf Enterprise and Transfer Station Enterprise, Waterways Enterprise and the CPA Fund, which did the athletic fields, those will be paid off in fiscal '31, so just less than 10 years from now. This is just a nice graphical representation, if at this time of night, you prefer to look at pie chart rather than chart. But sometimes people ask the question, okay, that's principal, but what about the interest? Well, this is the same information, just showing you the interest as well, which is 156 million. And that's why we encourage the rapid amortization of debt, so that we incur less interest costs. The only thing I do want to call out to you in the top two pale blue lines, debt exclusions outside tax levy limit as compared to general fund within tax levy limit. The difference between the two is the debt exclusions are those that town meeting voted, at town meeting, voters voted at town meeting and then went to the ballot and voted to have these particular repayments for these projects outside of the limitations of Prop 2 and 1/2. So, that's what that means. It's within the limitations of Prop position 2 and 1/2 or outside. So, just what are some of the fund debt statistics? Because it's fun to have debt statistics. The dollars per capita, based on our current population, the percentage of the fiscal '22 budget. So, when we talked about the financial policies, this is one of the key things we wanted to focus on, is when we look at level of debt. If you look at the percentage of the budget, as debt services percentage of budget is very high for sewer and water enterprise, higher than what we've seen in other people's sample financial policies. And the reason being, and why the need to customize our financial policies to our situation, is that we're making major investments in our infrastructure and our financial policies have to reflect that. So, that's the only reason I want to bring that out to you. And then just a percentage, the dollar value of the average bill. So, of the average water and sewer bill that we just voted those rates for, about 49% of that is going to debt service, which is going to the improvements in the system. So, what about, when is all of this debt coming off? We had that earlier slide showing that it was between fiscal '31 and fiscal '41. In five years from now, 60% of our debt will be retired. In 10 years, almost 86%. And then in 15 years, 98%. So, even though it runs to fiscal '41, in 15 years, 98% of all that debt will be retired. So, that's something interesting to look at, especially when you look at that big number of 119,000. Keep in mind that 9 million that we're retiring this year. We have rapid amortization for a reason, and this is one of the reasons why. What are we borrowing our money for in the general fund? This is just the breakdown of the current debt that's outstanding. And some of this has been outstanding for a number of years. We try not to borrow in the last few years for equipment or vehicles. And the ESCO is the largest, followed by four-shore protection, and then school buildings, equipment and fields. Wrap that up.
Did we, did we use the ESCO, though? Because I know we put money in it.
We're on the very last bit. It's just a little over a quarter of a million dollars that's left of that full 5.9 million. And that's the bottom of this building, basement, but that project's ongoing. Again, just a pie chart, if you get a little tired and want to look at pretty colors, put it in there. So, what's left that's outstanding right now that's been authorized? Not that much. We have the $2 million authorization for seawalls and four-shore protection. That's from 2015. It's never been allocated. That was a petition, so that's like our safety allocation. We have the FEMA four-shore design, 3.5 million, which we only expect to issue another 500,000 because that's our 25%. We had to approve the full amount, but we only expect to use the 25% of it. The Septic Loan Program, which is supported by governments. And then the land acquisition that Jim spoke to at the beginning of the meeting, which has just been completed, that's outstanding. So, probably about another 1.85 million we'll be issuing between the items in red. And then South Shore Vo-Tech. After we took our vote at town meeting to authorize the 18.9 million, the South Shore Vo-Tech School Committee voted to reduce that amount to 10.5. We do not have to take a subsequent vote, but our liability for that will go down. And our liability is only 7% up to sort of overlapping debt. What are some of the big things that are coming down the line? On the general fund, it's gonna be the FEMA subsidized four-shore storm damage repairs. We still have four open disasters. They are all in very active states of design, engineering, and in some cases, construction. But it's not all gonna hit at the same time. This is gonna hit probably over the next two to seven years as these things make their way through different permitting and design area levels. And then we have the Oceanside Area Seawall Replacement. I know Kevin's working on that, and we're having a meeting tomorrow to look at some grant possibilities for any of these projects. So, that's something that, there's a lot of money that's coming, becoming available in FMA flood mitigation assistance as well as in a BRIC program, which is bringing resiliency to infrastructure. And a couple of other FEMA-related grant programs that we've had good luck with in the past.
Madam Shagun, is you a question? And Jim, can we have them come before us in the next couple of meetings? Give us an update on all the question, just, no, Kevin and the...
Why, me being on the call every single two weeks for the last seven years?
No, no, when I was meeting the projects that would be funded.
Yeah, and not even just FEMA, but yeah.
I can always tell when Nancy's on a... I can always tell when Nancy's been on a FEMA call, or I just go blank.
It's a special kind of joy. So, look, here are our FEMA PWs. These are all of the storms and all of the... These are the FEMA PWs. There you go. Just so you can see it on a map, our, the problem that we have is when you see the same color, this same area in all different four, all different columns, that's a problem. FEMA does not do well with things coming from different pots, and that's why most of our projects have installed. We had repetitive loss on similar structure, on the same structure, maybe in different areas. And it's not easy to try to design that when it's so much for this storm, so much for that storm. And we are working with them to deal with that. Andrew?
Those are all just different projects that are, either all go or all finished now?
None of them are finished, except for Egypt Beach. Egypt Beach is done, and then the Peggety Beach PW 397 is almost done. The rest of these are all open projects that are in current levels of design and engineering and permitting.
So, Egypt Beach was...
So, this is actually a liability. Because we're gonna have to pay 25% of those projects when they come.
You're probably looking at a minimum of 20 million. But they will not come all at once. There's just no way. Like, Third Cliff has been on and off town meetings with authorizations. And we're still doing modeling for that to satisfy CZM. So, this is just what, a graph of what our debt looks like. It's, as you can see, the rapid amortization, the red line are those two projects we just spoke about and how they fill in. And what we'll do in that fiscal '22, '23 is smooth that out so that we don't have that bump in there. So, when we retire debt, we backfill it with new projects so we don't lose the ability to maintain our capital plan. That's just me showing you. If I moved, if we, Pam and I, when we work on when we issue this debt, if we moved those red lines out by one year, that creates a gap in fiscal '23. I could use that gap to help pay down the items in red so that I have less of an impact going forward. So, it's very interesting for structure, very boring for you at 9 o'clock at night. So, moving on. This is just, we're gonna go really quickly through the different enterprise funds. This is Widow's Walk and what's going to be going on with it with the additional 770,000. Everything was good. We added the 770,000 at the last town meeting so we could do the parking lot and finish the clubhouse improvements. What we want to do now is mitigate that impact of that 770,000 on their debt. See how in fiscal '24, '25, depending on when that goes out, it starts to bring it up above the level where we want it. So, we wanted to start looking at, as we roll that note, making payments on it to get it back down where we find it to be a manageable level. And again, you can see the impact of the irrigation system, if that were to hit in '32, '33. So, now that we know the impact, we can start planning for how we can make that a more manageable impact. Transfer Station Enterprise, we have a loader that's outstanding. It had retired all of its debt. Now it's picked some up because of the yard jockey. And we have a backhoe that's proposed for October STM. None of this is anything new. It was all on the capital plan. Some of it's just moving a little faster. And again, this is an enterprise fund that maybe we don't necessarily want it to, we would prefer to pay in cash. Depending on when our retained earnings get certified, we may be able to do that with the backhoe and we wouldn't have to bring it on as a debt item. Sewer Enterprise, you can see the rapid amortization that that has going on in the blue line. And these are the projects that are outstanding currently, and there are certainly more projects on the plan that'll start to fill in. But there's a lot of, excuse me, availability in their debt service based on the current levels that they can bring projects on and support them. Water Enterprise, the Water Enterprise also has some retirement of debt, but because there's been so much infrastructure brought on so quickly and all of it was necessary, their level of debt doesn't retire at the same level as the sewer department. So, their debt picture just continues to get bigger, larger and larger, which is what the board knows from the rate discussions we have, because we're increasing rates because of our debt service. And this is what it looks like. But it's all necessary improvements that need to be made. Waterways has declining debt. They don't really have a lot on their five-year capital plan as yet that would fill this in. They're trying to do most of their things, most of their projects with cash, as well as they've been very successful with their grant programs. So, the biggest thing they have going on right now is a million-dollar dock replacement. And they're looking for a grant to cover 75 to 80% of that. The current debt exclusions, this is always in everyone's mind. There's 62 million outstanding. Those are the years they retired. Those are the projects. So, the Senior Center, 10 million of it has been borrowed. It will be on the tax bills this year. What we have currently outstanding is 8.8 million, so we got a really large cash premium, so that helped reduce it. Even though we borrowed 10, we only have to pay back 8.8. This is what our debt exclusions look like in a graphical format. As you can see, there, there's a little bit of choppiness there. And see in '20 and '21 how it dropped? We discussed with the board in 2019, if we borrow the Senior Center in two pieces to try to level it out or if the board would prefer to give taxpayers a little bit of a break. And the board was more in favor of giving taxpayers a little bit of a break. So, that's why you see it leveled out, and then it kind of pumps up in '22, and that's the Senior Center coming on as one loan. So, the impact of the major school project, I think, is on everyone's mind, is it's going to be on special town meeting. Right now, the, we would hope to cover the feasibility study out of cash and other available articles. There would still need to be a bidding process and a construction process if it gets accepted to MSBA further on and then the voters accept whatever project comes forward. So, you're still looking at, I would think, three to five years out before you'd actually be borrowing money. You might have an approved project if one comes forward, but you wouldn't necessarily be borrowing money where you'd have to repay that. So, that gives us some time to reduce that schedule. Based on an 85 million dollar school project, which was the estimate from that study a few years ago, it doesn't mean that's the same thing that's gonna come out of this particular MSBA feasibility study. And based on the same reimbursement rate that Gates cut, which I don't know if we are going to get exactly the same amount, we're looking at a town share of about 47.6. So, a couple of unknowns there, but just to give you an idea, if you financed it over 25 years, which was how the middle school was done, it would be about an estimated impact of 9,254 in current, based on current data. If you went only 20 years, there would be about a $700 savings, which is that interest savings. People would have a larger impact, but they would pay less in interest.
Can I ask her one question? I know you don't really want to ask your questions.
I'm going a little quicker. I'm almost done.
Did you have, I was just trying to go back to your chart. Did you have the potential water treatment plant debt on your chart? You didn't write. I was looking at the colors. I didn't see...
No, these are existing ones. I do have it coming up.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. And here we are.
But you had that as a debt exclusion?
Well, I have it two ways. This is part of our discussion. We have like three slides that I'm gonna go really quickly about. So, the other major enterprise capital project that isn't approved but is on the five-year plan would be a new water treatment plant. Early estimates of 40 million, as the board knows, but maybe some people at home don't know, the design contract was only awarded two meetings ago. So, this is, the design is ongoing. And as Sean just said, there's a lot of things they need to do to decide what type of plant we need and how to cite it before they can get a real good feeling for the price. This is a potential eligible use of the ARPA funds. We already have $900,000 of ARPA funds. We should get another 900,000. And we are waiting to find out what Plymouth County is going to do with the rest of the ARPA funds that they claimed as a county. They said that they would roll out a plan by the end of July. We still haven't heard anything yet. So, we don't know if it would be based on population, if it's gonna be an application process, or if they're planning to do something else with the money. So, we have yet to find out. We also have the Clean Water Trust that we could go through. Again, some potential FEMA grants or other resiliency grants that may come out of the infrastructure plan. And there's two different ways to fund this, on the water rates or as a debt exclusion. It wouldn't be the first time that a enterprise fund project was done as a debt exclusion. We just retired in fiscal '21 the sewer plant upgrades. So, what's the difference? These are the pros and cons for water rates. My estimate for, based on the fiscal '21 rates, I didn't update for this for the fiscal '22 rates, was a 39% increase for the first year that this debt would hit. So, that's a huge increase on the water rates if it was to be financed that way, depending on the cost. And like I said, there's lots of grant programs, ARPA funds, that we would want to apply to this. On the tax rate, this personally is my preferred method of process of dealing with this, financing this debt because water is basically the same pool. It's not like some of the other, like sewer, there's a smaller number of sewer users. Pretty much everyone uses water unless they have a well. So, whether it's on the tax bill or whether it's on the water rates, it's still coming out of the same pocket for most people. What I like about the tax... What I like about the tax, the debt exclusion, is that it can be used as deduction on people's income taxes. It can be, um, if people have mortgage, mortgages and they have escrows, this now makes it a monthly payment, rather than part of their, uh, coming up with it as, uh, once a quarter water bill. Um, elderly residents would, could defer all a portion of their real estate taxes. Based on what's on the special town meeting, the, um, elderly residents could now potentially also defer water, their water charges as well. So that would be a pro on the other slide now, if that passes. Um, a change in usage behavior would not result in additional increases, so it would be based on the value of your home. So, it goes either way. If it were, the cons would be that it would have to be approved by voters at a town meeting and have to go to a ballot. So that, it's another, it's another step to get that approval. But again, it's just another way of, that's another discussion for, uh, a further discussion to have when we talk about that project, when it comes further, comes forward as construction. This is what that schedule would look like, um, for the debt exclusions. If we had a school, uh, an elementary school of 80, 47 million plus or minus, and a water treatment plant, you would see a major jump in your debt exclusions. But, you're going to have a major jump with a water treatment plant, in the water rates or the debt exclude on the taxes. Um, and you would have a major, um, jump in your taxes if you do an elementary school. There just isn't enough retirement with what we have out there to really absorb it. So, uh, I did wanna bring that one forward, but I do wanna end on a happy note. So I wanted to give you an update on the Senior Center. So, in 2019, when we talked about this, I estimated the Senior Center impact, um, to the average taxpayer at the time would be about $2,230. Right now, we've issued $10 million, um, in a bond last year, and we have 2.2 million on a short-term note. So far, the impact, based on the current fiscal '21 value, is 1,433. Um, if we were to issue the whole 2.2 million, um, as a, that's out in a, a note right now, as a bond, that would be an additional impact of 383. So that would still be well below what we, uh, initially estimated in April 2019. But we do have, against that 2.2 million, we have $242,000 in gifts that have already been received, that can go against that. We have the sale of the Minut Fire Station, and we are still waiting for the final cost of the Senior Center project, because it had, uh, planning board conditions in it for a parking study for six months, that it might need additional, a parking, additional parking area. It's gonna be a while before that project closes out and we have final costs. So, and we'll have this discussion closer to a time when it comes for that December ban to mature, whether the board wants to roll that ban and not, um, issue it as a bond, to try to give it more time to retire. Because we also have the discussion about the Senior Center, old Senior Center, what to do with that. Depending on what the board decides after the old Minut, Minut Fire Station sells.
That's great, Nancy.
Is that variance just due to us estimating the interest rates too higher than they are?
Um, in, interest rates and the value of the town went up, and the average value of the house went up, so things moved around a little bit. So, we always wanna estimate on the high side, and come in low, and not be going in the other direction. I mean, we got a huge cash premium on that, like you, you saw, we issued 10 and we're only paying back 8.8. So, um, I won't go over the summary slides, you can read them at your leisure. So, that was, I think, I think I did in 18 minutes.
Good job.
Awesome.
Thank you, thank you. Want me to shake the test, folks?
Yes.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. So, onto old business, discuss vote assigned special town meeting articles. Are you with us?
I'm still here, I would like to go through it. You have a recommendation in here as to what's up, what's on.
Yep.
Some recommendations that you might wanna delay votes, Article Four in the Havley School feasibility, uh, Article Five, the capital improvements until capital budget meets. Again, these are up to you. Uh, the planning board is having their public hearing on the petition articles Thursday. Uh, so they'll be coming in, so you might wanna wait and have a discussion with them. And Article Six, Community Preservation, we still haven't heard what they're gonna be doing, particularly on the Border Street project.
I guess they're hearing something on Monday night.
That's what it looks like. I think what's gonna come up on that, just from what I've been hearing, is that they might fund a portion of it, and then it'll be up to the board. If you decide you wanna exercise your option, how we're gonna come up with the balance.
Well, that remains to be seen, what we actually can or can't do. There seems to be questions floating around about that.
What was this for?
The Border Street land, what we can and can't do.
Oh.
Depending on the appraisal, and depending on what kind of private fundraising there is, and there is a question as to if the difference between the appraised value and the offer that they've currently got on the table is such that CPC can't pay over the appraised value, but there's an offer on the table for 2.3 million, where's that other money gonna come from? And, it seems like it would be alright, apparently, if it were to come through private fundraising. But there seems to be a question as to whether or not the town would be allowed to use other town funds. That just sorta came my way today.
Well, and we've already talked about this, um, in terms of the appraisal, there's no appraisal necessary on this property.
Well, they have one.
And, I, just, under normal circumstances, if the town was looking to purchase a piece of property, we went and said, "We wanna buy that piece of property over there, uh, someone wanted to sell that to us." We have to go through an appraisal process, and that determines the value that we can place on that property. This is a 61A, that doesn't apply. The value is what the offer is for the highest and best use under current zoning. Okay, what does that mean? If they were selling this for $10 million, because they were gonna put a 40B, that's not the highest and best use on the zoning, so you wouldn't pay that. But the 2.3, that is the value. The CPC can pay that if they choose, they are not restricted by that appraisal value. However, I, they don't believe it's worth what they're asking, so I don't think they're gonna put up the 2.3 million. The town can use a mixture of methods to pay for it. We can take private donations, uh, we can borrow, we can use cash. Or the town has the option to say, "Okay, um, Group X, the town is gonna put up this much money, and we are assigning the, the option to purchase to you."
Right.
Go get the money, let us know how it works out. Um, that is a, that is an option. But, um, the whole appraisal value on a 61A doesn't apply. And I've spoken to council, she's opined on that, we've provided that to the CPC, but.
We'll see what happens on Monday night.
Yep.
So I would suggest that that has to be delayed as well. Does anyone have anything to say about the articles that we would want to assign tonight? Unpaid bills, budget.
Why are we assigning them now?
Well, that's what is on the agenda. Discuss, discuss vote assigned special town meeting articles. Did I read that wrong?
No, I just don't know why we're doing it, usually we don't do it this early.
Well, it's.
It's not as early as you think it is, it's not many days into October, so.
I mean, typically the chair does the unpaid bills.
So that's fine. Budget reconciliations, is that usually the chair?
Is that just moving money between departments?
Nancy? Yes.
Yeah.
I don't think we're raising additional money.
We are, uh, just for the enterprise funds.
Enterprise funds.
Yes, just all those reconciliations. I don't really have any preference, I'll do whatever. So, I'm happy to.
There's nine of them?
Happy to.
Total articles, I believe there's 11 total articles.
11?
11.
Two who's citizen.
Do petitions. And generally, I think the petition would present the, so, but there's, uh, six that we would ask you to vote to support tonight. One, two, three, seven, eight, nine, that's it. One, two, three, seven, eight, nine. Support those six. You can assign all the rest of them if you want, it's up to you, but at least to vote to support those six articles.
So I'm seeing six motions, assigning articles. And does that mean we would not assign the other articles tonight?
That'd be entirely up to you, you wouldn't vote on them tonight because you're not ready, but you could assign them if you want. But you might wanna wait because some might say, "I'm not sure, I support that, I wanna hear more about it."
Well, I don't have a problem waiting. Does anyone else care?
No. Wait for Karen to be here.
All right, all right.
I mean, we're all gonna do two or three, so.
All right.
I don't think you have to assign each one. And when Nancy, you want them voted tonight, they don't have to assign, who's gonna speak?
You want us to vote them without assigning them, is that what you want?
Yeah, we do that all the time.
But.
Oh, I'm just asking.
I can, it would be helpful if the board would just help us understand if any of you wanna change, because the grant committee's holding their meeting just to know if any of you's gonna change in the morning. So I know that there were questions about reserves, Article Three. So if there's anything in probably Article Two or Three that the board doesn't want from there, or wants to change, I just, that would be the only thing I just wanna know from the board. You know, the, the, your recommendations and your assignments, we certainly need to keep it up. It's just that the other committees can get going.
They can't get going unless we get going?
Well, you don't want them to apply on making a transfer to the Open Liability Trust Fund if the, the board does not fully support that transfer to the Open Liability Trust Fund. And that's one of the items that the board did discuss that they perhaps wanted to have further discussion about. So those transfers, reserves, I think are probably the biggest thing. I don't think, pardon me, go for anything, I don't think those budget reconciliations, unless there's something on it that's calling to the board's attention about an issue that they would change in. And the only thing with that, I have the board say is, um, that they wanted to talk about was the transfer to the source.
So, the uncontroversial, therefore potentially votable articles tonight, is Article One, Article Two, not Article Three because of the disagreement we had about OPEB? Is that right?
I don't know, if you still have it, Mr. Green.
Yeah, I mean, can we talk about them?
Sure. All right, Article One. Who wants to talk about it?
Good with Article One.
Do we wanna vote up right now? Does someone wanna make a motion?
Take a motion to accept Article One as written.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, motion carries.
We'll assign them later.
Assign them later date, yeah. Um, Article Two, fiscal year 2022 budget reconciliations. Was there anything controversial about that?
Just so we understand, uh, Nancy, where are these, is this the account it's coming from? Like $584 from the roadway maintenance?
It's going to roadway maintenance, so if you look at the background information, you have a lot of reject, that's the road share funds we get. So it's sitting in the cameras waiting for.
All right, I'll take a different one. So, the next one. So it's $12,240 are going from the technical, what budget is it?
It's go, the, those are the building issues.
From where?
So, the, the technical services, we come from the Waters Walk receipts, not retained earnings, they have a lot.
Okay.
They're generating receipts covering that, sitting with their, um, their maintenance, they're generating that receipt set year that they, it can cover their receipts. Um, the hauling contracts, um, right now, I believe that they're generating that receipts that we do take that from their receipts as well, and not getting their retained earnings. The five and six, did you both have, both have them free cash? Because those are additional contributions. And then seven.
Hold on, one, two, three, four. So $27,000 from free cash for software.
Yeah. And then.
16.
$16,000, $16,000 is the deal of the century, the 5% town share match to get a truck and, um, uh, three years. And then, uh, number seven is property generalizability insurance, and that one would come from another line. It would come from contributory health insurance, because they're getting a premium holiday for the month of September. So it's there, um, probably at least $150,000. So we will have the savings to apply to the property generalizability issue.
And all that, that extra 100 grand's gone to free cash anyways, so.
Yeah, and just those numbers. And so it's a shared, it's a shared budget, so a shared budget.
Do we know what the free cash number is?
I have an estimate, I have to pull my balance sheet back from the department review, because we are waiting for our Clean Water Trust loan reimbursement, so.
About.
My range would be 3.5 to 4.5.
Good job.
We have a lot of large turnbacks, revenue's still okay in some areas, um, better than we expected, so. But we have a lot of deficits up there, and this Clean Water Trust one is folded this up.
That's huge, free cash. Is that the biggest effort?
I don't, I don't think so.
Close.
We, we had over, we had about 3.5 million two years ago.
That was your low end, though. I'm good with you.
Anyone else have any question?
Nope.
Somebody wanna make a motion, please?
Move to support Article Two as written.
Second, second by Ms. Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
All aye?
Aye.
Four, nothing, motion carries. So here's the transfer to reserves. And that was where the OPEB disagreement came in, correct?
It was a question about the price, the way, whether or not we wanted to do this year what we did last year. It wasn't, it's not a policy, it was just what we did last year.
What, so go over the first one, Widow's Walk, 100 grand.
So, my estimate for Widow's Walk retained earnings is somewhere around around $700,000. So they have enough to cover everything that's in this for them. So, my recommendation is to put another $100,000 into their capital stabilization fund, which will bring it up to 215,000. And we'll just continue to build that, and add some to the areas towards the irrigation system and other projects that are gonna come forward. And they have stuff in Article Five that would be funded from their retained earnings as well. This would not completely be a loss there again, because they would still have money that they can spring, things will move. You could still put more in capital stabilization, or we could close out their retained earnings for next year.
Why would you put it there instead of just funding the current capital project? Why, why are you saving it for the wa, the irrigation instead of just paying the club owners?
It's not necessarily for the irrigation, it's to build up some type of a reserve for that enterprise fund. Because that enterprise fund is the one that's the most, has the most followers, only due to weather. And they have in years where we've had deficits. At that beginning, this is back to the financial policies, as to what is the, what do you want in these different capital stabilization funds? What do you want as a level of retained earnings? It's a bigger discussion. It would be $115,000 for Widow's Walk, when they had deficits, it would have been more, more than.
Excuse me, more than that?
And we'll see if it matters, and then I can grow. I'd like to see them a lot, when you have at least two or three times that much in their, um, reserve fund.
And what's in their capital stabilization fund now?
$115,000.
Okay. Because it just really started up, right?
But, if they're having a weather concern, don't you want it in retained earnings as opposed to capital stabilization?
Either way, either way, it requires the town meeting vote to move it.
Right, but retained earnings can go to, to fix the budget, where capital stabilization isn't supposed to.
If you have two bad years in a row, Tony, you might not have any retained earnings.
But why do you want it in a capital fund instead of a?
Because it's there. It's, it's, that's your savings bank, as opposed to, it's like the town stabilization fund. We have free cash that rolls every year, but we put money into the stabilization fund, that's our rainy day.
I know how it works.
So that's, that's all this is, is putting a rainy day fund for the golfers.
My question is, why would you put it into, retained earnings is the, is the rainy day fund for operations? Capital stabilization is the rainy day fund for buying some piece of equipment later.
I mean, retained earnings is more like your free cash. That's exactly what it is, retained earnings is just a free cash excess on a year-to-year basis. So it fluctuates, that's why we wanna put money into stabilization, 'cause that's there, we know that's there.
But that's, not, my, my question is, stabilization has to go to a capital project, retained earnings can go to operations.
Stabilization can go to operations too, if you want it to, you don't want to, it's not a good thing to do. Um, you don't wanna use free cash towards operations either, you don't wanna use either one. But you can.
Is it a higher vote threshold to get it out of stabilization versus getting it out of retained earnings?
Two-thirds versus a majority for retained earnings?
Yeah.
Two-thirds versus what?
Versus majority for retained earnings. So, it's just, it's, it's harder. Versus majority for retained earnings. So it's just, it's harder. But if we're looking at that irrigation system coming down the road in however many years, that's going to be a big amount.
I think it's a reasonable conversation to have with financial policies, we need to have two different reserves. So then, you know, one, you're going to have to tackle, so you don't end up with what they have leasing stuff, leasing all of their equipment or not being able to replace their equipment. And then you have something that is a backup for when you have an operational deficit. And trying to do everything to lower the continual, the occurring operational cost. Pull back in the leases, keep down the debt, so we don't have this major piece of fixed costs that we have to come up with, and we have nowhere to go.
What are you estimating the retained earnings will be after this year?
After fiscal '22? I have no.
What's that? Oh, no, after the, I'm sorry, fiscal '21.
My estimate is $700,000.
In retained earnings?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because they made five or 600 grand this year.
Yeah, we had all over from the prior year, and they had all that extra, additional revenue. And they had budgetary turnbacks. Like I said, these are just my estimates, nothing has been certified revenue or.
Yeah.
Hi.
That's my disclaimer, I'm simply like, I'm going to wear it as a necklace.
This July was about 50 grand less than last year, though, right?
I mean, there's so much in retained earnings. If we want to put a little there, I don't think it's a big deal, but.
Just, just a, I don't want to belabor that conversation. Now, July golf revenues were probably about $50,000 less than last July. Because when we thought that July was a washout this year, so. I would think August is going to be less also, just because July and August last year were dry.
Yeah, we're not going to make 700 grand a year for.
Yeah, no.
If only.
We can wish. So what do we want to do about this? Do we want to skip over this one?
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with the 100.
All right, what about the next?
What about OPEB?
OPEB situation.
From last year when we decided, last year, a one-off, we decided the excessive meals tax revenue over the estimate. And the room occupancy, because it's a grocery, a room occupancy receipts. We put those two items at the special town meeting into the OPEB stabilization fund. If we were to do it again, for this special town meeting, that would be the number. We had, our community tax estimate was low. We estimated $115,000 because we didn't expect there to be reasonably that much.
We said they were 200,000.
So there's a significant there. And the same with room occupancy. We haven't dedicated the room occupancy towards any liability, nor have we dedicated it to the operational budget because we don't have a real feel for what that revenue source is going to do. So that, right now it goes out, like it did this year, to free cash and then be allocated elsewhere. Or you can dedicate it to something, and that's something probably that will go through financial forecast. But I don't think for another year, which is reasonable, kind of what that actual revenue source is going to bring in. So this is a way to put something forward with that. We weren't expecting to take in additional meals tax revenue. Room occupancy tax isn't allocated to anything else. We, I believe we're going to have healthy free cash. And I know the board doesn't have a policy other than 2% for funding OPEB. So again, it's a call of the board.
So if we break down the component, how much do we put in the OPEB anyways? 2%?
Right now, we do 2% of the pension fund.
How much is that?
This year is $115,000.
So we put a 100?
On top of that?
Yeah, so that's in the budget. And then how much was it from meals tax, you said? 50 grand?
No, the meals tax came in over 200,000, and.
But it's the excess, so.
But we estimated 115, we cut it down.
So 85 grand there?
Yeah, over, more than that, just over that.
What's that?
I believe it's over that.
100 grand?
Yeah, and then the balance is room occupancy.
And you're putting all of the room in there, so that's.
It's not dedicated to anything right now.
Right. So about 60 there?
I think that's more along 90, because it gets you up to 278.
All right, because the 278 doesn't include the 115.
Right.
So it's, so, wait, meals is, meals and room tags both equal 278?
Yeah, hold on, I'm trying. Talking with the organize, you have too many folders in your own.
I guess it doesn't matter. Those are the only two components, right?
Say that as I bring this spreadsheet.
All right, well, I didn't want you to keep looking.
Okay, so meals was estimated at 115, came in at 257, so it was 142 on meals.
Mm-hmm.
And.
So 130.
Had no estimate, it came in at 135.
Okay. So right now our policies say we have to put 2% of our reserve, we may put 2% of our, 2% of our.
Pension obligation.
Pension, right. So we put in 115, and you're suggesting we put in another 300 almost? All of our room tax and a, and half of our meals tax, as we almost doubled. Okay. So in the past, I guess my opinion is, is there something else we want to do with $300,000 than put it into this savings account? Or a portion of it? I would say yes.
If there's something else you want to do with it?
Well, I, I'll, I'll come up with something by the next meeting.
The bandstand. So this is not related to that advisory committee recommendation that they thought that we weren't being fiscally responsible? Is this the same discussion on?
It'll be their same discussion with you about the OPEB liability trust fund. I just try to throw money at the OPEB liabilities, any opportunity I have. And at the fall special town meeting after free cash is confirmed by, that's one of the opportunities to build up our reserves. And we did a lot of reserve building last year. Probably hit seven or eight reserves, 6% of reserves this year. They brought forward 3. But again, it's up to the board with their number of reserves rate and additional funding.
And last year we threw an additional $100,000 in, right? That's what we, came with a higher number and we said 100.
Yeah, no, that was what you did as the year-end transfers, at the special town meeting, the fall, you also put money in.
Thank you. It was the year-end transfers where we had the.
Special.
And we reduced it. It was like a few hundred.
We put 100.
Right. But the number was faintly small.
It was, they were saying, because we.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. I was beginning to wonder what year I was in.
So last year there were three components that went into OPEB. There was the 2%, there was extra money that you put in it at fall special, and then there was the transfer money you put in.
Yes.
Aye. I think we may disagree, but I mean, I, this problem is so large, and anytime we can take a chunk at it, I, I think we have to, I mean, it's what, we're still over 120 million of a major liability? I mean, the, the albatross is not going away. And I know it's, oh, yeah, there, there's just a little bit, but it's, you know, other cities and towns have taken huge chunks and had to do it, take a big, you know, so I get that it's a small, but we can't keep kicking it down the, down the.
Well, it's maybe small, but it's better than nothing, I suppose, right?
Well, there's not a lot of towns that are doing it. There's a few towns that are budget, that have funded it.
But also I would say that Nancy and Jim, you know, with all the rating services that come in here, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, consistently suggest that we build up our OPEB to keep our interest rates down so that we're showing that we're being.
We need to be more serious about OPEB if we want to increase our bond rating to AAA.
So we've had that conversation a number of times, and we've come to the conclusion that that'll have no impact on it whatsoever. That it will not change our bond rating, right, Nancy?
We also would have to address our financial policies. I think what we do more at some point, not now, maybe not the next two years, we might see our bond rating decrease if they haven't taken control over our OPEB liability.
Which we don't want that.
Well, that's.
If you look at the idea you and the financial policies, what communities around us are doing, basically the same communities that we look at for our water rate study, and we are lagging.
So Noble puts all their meals tax into OPEB. I think Hanover puts 50% of their meal tax into OPEB. It just goes directly. When we did it in, in Noble, it was actually illegal. The Department of Revenue said you can't do that. We just said we're doing it anyways.
I just want to make sure that we're, so we've had this conversation, and I, you know, I'm.
So if we, if we update our financial.
Let me just finish. So last, the last two conversations we've had is, this will have no impact on our bond rating. So I don't want to create a scenario that says, well, maybe in the future it will do this. You know, we've discussed this. There's many things, our, our financial situations are very good, our bond rating is very high, and OPEB is not going to get us to triple, you know, AAA or, or A++.
Unless we did have a major change.
Right, unless we, which we don't have the capabilities.
Unless we do a major change for our OPEB situation.
Right. So I just want to make sure we all understand that we're not creating the scenario that's causing us to do this with an impact that it may not have. It's not, you know, it's not the end of the world. It's 300 grand. It certainly would be going to a good place, but I think this is one of the rare opportunities that the board has control over funds, that we can do something that, that we think is important as opposed to throwing it into this bucket that is going to have minimal impact. Whether it's, whatever it happens to be.
Can it go into a one-time expense, or is it more of a reoccurring? Could it go, let's go to one time, right? Because it has to be supportive.
I mean, it's going to be voted.
No, no, I understand that, but I just, you know, when you say something that we want to do, we want to make sure that it's, we're all understanding that it's a, like, we don't want to add, we would love to add, another, you know, body to a particular department, right? That's reoccurring, and you wouldn't suggest putting this money into some investment like that.
So Tony's right, just taking what are, small chunks of money, when you look at what our liability is, and tossing them into OPEB is not going to get the rating agencies to say, you're serious about OPEB. You have to, we're going to take the room occupancy tax, that's going to be dedicated to OPEB. This is going to be dedicated to OPEB. And then, when we pay off our pension, that's going to be dedicated to OPEB. Then with everything else, they might say, okay, now you have a plan. It might be a lousy plan, but you have a plan to eventually pay off your OPEB liability. I mean, the only town I know that's fully funded is Wellesley. And they paid off their pension, they put that in, and then they did a million dollar override, and that money went into their, their OPEB. So they're the only ones I know that are fully funded on their OPEB liability. But you have to put that other plan in place, just saying, well, we got some extra money, we're going to throw it in this year, is not going to get the rating, rating agencies to say, oh, yeah, you're doing it. It's going to have to be more beyond that that kind of puts a plan in place.
So right now our plan is, we put 2% of our pension in there.
Lots of other proposals for the plan, though.
What's that?
Lots of other proposals for the plan, though. Spoiler alert for the financial policies.
And the plan has been, when the pension gets paid off, that there'll be $7 million a year that's going to go in there. You know, that that's, unfortunately, the pension date keeps getting pushed off years and years and years, so.
But that's not, that's not in our policy. That needs to be put in our policy.
Right, that's, that's been our guide.
But that's the big chunk of money that you see in the future.
Right.
2028, 29, what's the pension?
I think it's 2031, yeah.
So they might have moved it again.
So I'll tell you what, I, I would suggest that we wait for Karen to get back and have a full discussion on that article. And again, I just want to make sure we're all fully understanding what it is, and whatever we do with it, we do with it.
Well, and I, and I would recommend that when we come back to that discussion, that we have some ideas of where you want to spend that $100,000, or whatever that amount is.
200, whatever it is.
Whatever that amount is.
Or a portion of it. You may just say.
Right.
We want to build a statue of John Danny and.
Did anyone else hear that?
Well, maybe for your next meeting, we will have certified free cash or retained earnings and have a number, concrete number, and the capital plan is out to the purpose of doing that. Because it is not so low, so it's 23, 27 capital plan.
All right, so we're going to skip that. Moving on to Article 7, the local options acceptance.
Well, what about the sped reserve?
Oh, well, I thought we were just going to.
I know, but we should maybe have, so this is, this is what we said we would do, or is this year two of this?
We, last year we authorized the, the, the creation of this reserve fund. It said we would fund it at a later time. This reserve fund is not a stabilization fund. It has limitations on it. It cannot be more than 2% of net school spending, so it's got a limitation of just under $900,000 that it can ever have as a balance. And money isn't taken out of town meeting, it's taken out by a, a vote of the town select board and school committee. So neither one can access the funds without the other's approval.
But when we created this account, so this has been a, a school expense for the last 375 years, and now we said, create the sped fund, and we said we would give it some seed money, but not necessarily regularly putting money from the town budget into there. So this is the seed money that we talked about.
Correct.
So we did talk about that, and that's what we said we'd do.
You're good?
I'm good.
We did talk about it at some point. So I think we're skipping this article.
We're skipping Article 4?
No, Arti, yes.
Yes, we're skipping Article 4.
Article 3.
Oh, yes.
Now, we're on to Article 7, the local option acceptance. That doesn't seem to be.
Why aren't we talking about Article 4? I'm sorry, I'm not following.
Capital planning needs to opine on that first and give.
They have to opine on the school first?
Yeah.
We try to get rid of the easy ones first.
Oh.
But apparently we're not succeeding to get rid of the easy ones first.
Okay, sorry.
It's all right. So the next quote-unquote easier one is the local option acceptance, deferred water usage fees. I think that's for elderly people.
You can defer your taxes under 418.
This is kind of like a nice veterans type of a, most people.
Someone actually wanted to do it this year, and Joe Harvey asked me if I, you know, if we'd accepted a little standard.
And when you say Joe, you mean the assessor, yes, okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve, supporting Article 7 as written.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four, nothing.
And I'll make a motion to approve Article 8 as written.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Four, nothing. He's a little lagging over there. Four, nothing, motion carries. Endorsement of master plan as recommended and approved by the planning board. Anyone want to discuss that? We all did receive copies of it, many drafts, many opportunities to have input. It's, I believe, been finalized? Is it, the master plan has been accepted by the state finalized? Or do we have to accept it first and then they?
We accept it first.
We accept it first, okay. Does anyone have a problem with us voting on that? No?
No.
All right. May I have a motion, please?
Move to a slight more vote to recommend Article 9, endorsement of master plan as recommended and approved by the planning board.
Move by Mr. Goodrich, second by?
Second.
Second by Mr. Beniani, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye, aye. Four, nothing, motion carries. Beat me to the punch that time. All right, so, um, so we will take up the other articles because there are other boards involved.
Are 10 and 11 coming in? Or there's the same person, right?
Yeah, the local planning board and the 9, you can certainly invite them to one of your kitchen rooms.
I, I think there are people actually here for that, because I can't, why else they would be here at this time?
I don't ask any of the boards if they wanted to hear from the planning board first.
Okay.
What do we want to hear from first? The planning board, sorry, it's just hard to hear.
Well, if they're sitting here, maybe they want to give us a quick overview?
Sure.
Are you the petitioner?
Was I, I saw something written by Mr. Bowen.
Yes.
Explaining.
Mr. Bowen can't be here this evening, but he did write these petitions, and he is confident that they are legally sound.
They passed most.
That's Rich Bowen?
Yes. He's hoping I'd be able to make it on Thursday, but he's.
I think it's, I think it's somewhere in the backup, the analysis of the articles.
We got an email, yeah. We got an email. You're right.
Send it out, yeah. Sent it out, yeah.
Yeah.
I know I read something by Rich Bowen.
Yeah, he sent it to Karen Joseph, and Karen shared it with us, and I shared it with the board.
That was the trail. Yes. Thank you. Would you like to say who you are?
Yes. Very gladly so. I'm Keith Saunders. I was raised in Situate since 1970. 1986 graduate of S H S. I have a Ph.D. in sociology from Northeastern University. My area of concentration was drug policy and social movements. And this was back in the late 1990s and early 2000s, as we were seeing medicinal marijuana start to emerge. I identified it as something that seemed to be a trend that we were going to be on. That is, people were questioning prohibition, seeing that the long-term effects of it were not producing what we had been promised. In fact, in many ways, it produced the opposite of it, and questioning the reasons that we were having it, which is explaining why we've seen this movement in the United States, in Massachusetts, over the past 20 years. I worked, after finishing my dissertation, I worked with the Massachusetts Cannabis Reform Coalition. I was on the board for 10 years. I was president for five years. I have served on the Board of Directors for the National Organization for the Reform Marijuana Laws since 2010. This is my vocation. This is my calling, right? Is drug policy and social movement, and looking at how we relate to the substances that are in the world around us. And cannabis, obviously, is something that's quite interesting, because it's an organic substance. It's natural. We used it for thousands and thousands of years. And then we hit this point in the early 2000s or 1900s, where it became a target for identifying racial minorities, targeting them, criminalizing them. And this spread out until we hit the 1960s, when the marijuana user, as defined by the prohibitionists, became white, middle-class, college-educated, Barack Obama, et cetera, and, you know, Clarence Thomas. I mean, it's across the spectrum. It becomes ubiquitous. And so, as this generationally unfolds, we now have to confront the problem that we had with criminal prohibition. And how are we going to control cannabis use without using law enforcement in the way that we had, because that just simply wasn't working? When we first prohibited cannabis criminally, there were tens of thousands of users in the United States. There are tens of millions of users today, and all of those people started using under prohibition. So clearly, the criminal justice approach doesn't work. Now, I don't have any investment in any particular cannabis company. I've worked independently. I've advised people who have opened up dispensaries in Massachusetts, recreational stores in Massachusetts. I opened the first cannabis vocational school east of San Francisco in Natick, Massachusetts, the Northeastern Institute for Cannabis. I was the education director for a year there. And I learned quite a bit about what we're dealing with here in the process. When we legalized it, and I've been participating in the decriminalization, medical, and legalization campaigns as they were happening, when we legalized it, we changed the entire scene. So all of that which prohibition had relied upon now can fall into question. And we've had almost a decade of cannabis sales in Colorado, and we know what happens when you open up a cannabis store. Nothing in particular. And same thing happened in Massachusetts. When you opened up a Pure Leaf in Hanover, did anybody... Did anything happen? No. We don't see anything. Why? Because the cannabis market was so well-established under prohibition that when we legalized it, nothing really changed. Now, does anybody want to venture a guess? I'm not going to ask you to go on record, because I know that we're being filmed. Just venture a guess in your head. How many pounds of marijuana do Situate residents over the age of 21 use in a year? Or, sorry, in a month?
How many pounds?
How many pounds of marijuana do Situate residents over the age of 21, who could legally purchase it in stores, use every month? Is it five pounds, 10 pounds, 20 pounds?
No idea.
All right.
I did some math.
How do you track that data?
I'm going to show you. I'm a sociologist. And I'll explain my methodology as well.
Thanks.
All right. First, we take the demographics. This is from the U.S. Census. Total population, population over 18. I calculated the population over 21 by estimating that Situate has 300 graduates or dropouts, and 50 graduating from other schools in any given year. Now, the actual number is closer to 200. So I overestimated the number of people who are under 21. So underestimated the number of people over. According to the Department of Public Health in Massachusetts, this data comes from the Cannabis Control Commission's website. 21.1% of residents over 18 use marijuana within the past 30 days. Applying the mean, we have X number... Where do I have that? I think I have two different copies here. Yes. Applying 67%. Do you have the 67% of the mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Applying 67% of the means to the Situate's 21 population gives us 1,920 monthly users. 14% of Massachusetts residents over 18 use marijuana daily. Okay. I'll get to that one. Because I readjusted down to 67 because generalization affects saying, "Hey, that's the mean for the whole state. Let's underestimate for Situate." Underestimating, if 14% use marijuana daily, applying 67% of the mean means 646 people in Situate, Massachusetts, over 21 use marijuana every day. The volume, assuming that a regular daily user uses 1 gram, which is the weight of a cigarette, tobacco cigarette, it's not a huge amount. Patients use quite a bit more than that. 1 gram per daily users, 4 grams or 1 gram a week for monthly users. We consume 53.8 pounds of marijuana flour every month. How much does that cost? Well, it's currently selling for $279 a month in Rockland's two dispensaries on average. They're 453.6 grams in a pound for $4,536 in gross revenue, and that's at the largest scale, so you pay less per gram. Grams are typically selling for $14 to $18 right now. The cost of licensed retail cannabis sold by the ounce to supply Situate's 21 and older residents demand is $244,236 a month. 3% local tax can draw $87,935 with these underestimates, not counting people from Cohasset or Norwell, or Marshfield, or Hanover, or Hull, or any of the tourists, or any of our seasonal residents. Norwell's expected to get over $300,000 in two years, and Rockland's expected to get over $200,000.
$200,000.
Now, what's important here is that the moratorium that was voted by the voters doesn't prevent anything with regard to growing it, I'm growing it, using it, I use it, possessing it, buying it, sharing it, turning it into food and concentrates, and then consuming it. None of that's illegal. You know what's illegal? Collecting a tax. That's it. It's the only thing that's illegal. Now, some people have said, "Hey, with the tax, you know, it's not really that much," whatever it happens to be. But with delivery, which is coming soon, it means that every doorstep in Situate becomes a potential local taxation for Norwell, for Marshfield, for Quincy, for Rockland, but not for Situate, because we can't collect the tax. So I'm asking that the board vote in support of this article. Any questions? Yes?
Ms. Karen?
Don't we still have an issue with banking and financing?
Not really.
What?
We don't.
Massachusetts doesn't. I know, but how... So, where do you...
There are banks that... I don't want to... But there are banks that will do business with them.
Oh, the entire marijuana industry in Massachusetts is through banking. It's done. It's all done in cash. But it's done in Massachusetts Bank. Century Bank has about 25 different accounts, and they're based out of Medford.
So would it come to the town in cash?
Yes. It has to be in cash. You can't pay the tax any other way.
So can we take... I mean, you're clearly educated in this. You're clearly extreme one side of this. What do you want to do in Article 10?
What we want to do is we want to lift the moratorium, the ban on taxable, regulatable cannabis business.
You want to lift the moratorium in allowing somebody to build a dispensary in Situate?
Yes, to operate a dispensary. You don't necessarily have to build one.
Article 11 makes the zoning changes necessary to allow a non-medical dispensary in Situate.
So let's... What's 10?
10 is...
Let him say. It's his article.
10 is to lift the moratorium, to end the ban on operating licensed, regulated cannabis businesses in Situate.
And you want to do... Is that right?
No. 11 is the zoning. Article 10 is to have a special act of the legislature allowing up to three dispensaries in Situate.
And you say the legislature, meaning town meeting?
No, town meeting would ask the state legislature to pass a special act.
It's up to three cannabis businesses, not just dispensaries. So we can have a cultivation site, like we have Untold Brewing, which is...
Well, I'm confused why he's telling me what's going on here, and you're not.
He has them in different order, so...
No, but he's...
11 is the zoning. 10 is the special act.
So 10 is you want to go to the state, and you want to say, "Hey, state, allow three dispensaries in the town of Situate."
Three licensed cannabis businesses. There are multiple tiers of cannabis business. There are recreation stores. There are medical dispensaries. There are delivery services. There are cooperatives. There are manufacturing sites, and there are laboratories.
So we already allow medical?
You have to, yes.
Right. So that's not one of your... If someone wants to put a medical one in, they can do it now?
If someone wants to put in a medical...
And most of those other things that you just mentioned sell it also?
No. The testing labs only test it.
Right, testing labs, right.
Manufacturing labs only take in cannabinoids from a source outside and turn them into food and other products.
But don't they usually have a retail component?
Nope.
The one in Milford does?
No. You're allowed to have three licenses in Massachusetts. Any holder is allowed to have three.
Okay. That's technical.
So you can have a growth space. You can have a dispensary. You can have a manufacturing plant, but you can't have a testing site. Or you can have a testing site...
I understand. I understand. But so, and the reason you want to do this is so that the town can get $87,000 in taxes?
It's starting out...
Approximately?
Yeah.
That's your whole sole purpose of this, is for the town to get $87,000, so Nancy can put it in OPEB?
Yes. Well, I mean...
I knew that was coming.
To give you a little bit more of my background, I live on Itchy's Corner in the West End. Itchy was my grandfather. My mother worked for Dave Daughney and Dr. Joseph, small businesses here in Situate. It's small business in Situate. I like the idea of the two of them together, and this is exactly what that would fall into. Situate needs...
So you're doing it for economic development?
For common sense. That we're going to lose a whole bunch of money. That $87,000 we're not collecting is going someplace else.
So you want to do it for $87,000? That's what you wanted?
I want to do it because it's the right thing to do, because small business is good for the community. It creates jobs. It creates business taxes. It taxes. It can generate traffic to North Situate, because these are destination businesses. It can do a whole bunch of things to the benefit of the town.
That's what I'm trying to get at, why you're doing this. So you want economic development for small businesses, and you want to create $87,000 in taxes to go to the town?
I'm saying that $87,000 is an estimate of how many... How much in taxes could be coming in if Situate residents...
Or $100,000, or $50,000.
Yeah. I estimated low. I said, "We're using 67% of what the state uses on its averages."
No, I get it. Math. You can get whatever number you want. But that's what I'm trying to understand, what your purpose... So if the town... And again, I'm just taking the other opinion. These guys may have a... So if the town doesn't want it, if the citizens don't want it...
Then it's no different than it is right now.
Right. And what they should be weighing against that is starting three new businesses, potentially, and gaining somewhere under $100,000 in tax revenue.
And not losing that. Because the people, when they order it and they pay for it at their door, that means the money goes to Rockland. It never comes to Situate.
Right. Well, that's generating it.
But, yeah. So, you know, people will not be net exporting tax dollars.
Right. So that's what, as we... When we explain this to the town, we should say, "Here are the two options. One, we want to have three small businesses and generate $90,000 of revenue, or not have..."
I don't know how many businesses Situate could actually support. It probably can't support three retailers. I doubt that. One retailer, yes. I know this from research that I paid for back in 2015. We can do one retailer. They said Scott's Loney's Gas Station was the ideal location. Can't do it there. Green Bush Medical Building, second-best location. Now I understand it's going to be condos. Can't do it there. North Situate, Green Bush, somewhere in a commercial district. It's no different than a C V S. C V S sells opiates. I mean, this is cannabis. Kids can't walk in there. I go to Untold Brewing, and you've got kids. You've got pets. Parents are drinking. Everything's fine. And I'm not even asking about a social consumption site, because that's not going to work in this town either.
Ms. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Okay. I just want clarity on the three licenses. Is it that a license holder can operate up to three facets of the business? So you potentially could have nine different...
No, you'd only have three establishments total.
We could have three licenses held by one entity, or three licenses held by three entities, or two and one, but no more than three.
And it all applies to one of those different facets? That's my question. Okay.
No. It would comply to any one of them.
So you could have got three growers.
Yes. In fact, a cooperative would do very well in Situate. It's got a low footprint. If they did it outdoors, and they use greenhouses and light deprivation, they'd be able to get reliable crops. This summer has been hell. A lot of people are growing outdoors. It's been incredibly wet. So it makes it difficult.
Andrew, any questions?
Two questions. Well, so most of the growing is done indoors?
Right now, most of the growing in Massachusetts is done indoors. When you talk about places like Oregon and California, Northern California, it's almost entirely outdoors. Yes.
Security and other stuff.
Absolutely.
Do you have any data on, so if there's a retail store, how many people... How many people do they normally hire? Because you have the, you know, most of them hire in four or five people, and then some of the other manufacturers. I mean, yes, it's one new business, but it could be 10, 12, 13 new jobs. Do you have any of that data, or...
Off the top of my head, I'll tell you that the typical retail business is going to open up with about 18 to 20 people, from top to bottom. From their CEO, CFO, to their treasurer, to their, you know, legal advisor, to the managers, to the budtenders, to, you know, the promotions people in advertising.
And follow up. So how about data on property value?
Property value doesn't decrease. It pretty much goes up. There has been... In Colorado, there's been no tie to increases in crime. In fact, if you open up a dispensary, crime tends to decrease in the street. One of the things that prohibition relied upon was this thing that, you know, we're going to go and we're going to say, "It's always been this way. It's always been illegal. And if we legalize it now, all of these bad things will happen." And then we legalized it, and we're not seeing it. The police and EMTs aren't reporting that when they pry open the door with the jaws of life, a bong is rolling out of the car, but they still see the Jack Daniels bottles. So we're not seeing any difference in large part because we've always had such large consumption in our lifetimes.
More?
Another question. Sorry.
Yes?
Who is the licensing authority in this instance? Is it us, the town?
It's a two-part process. The town has to approve the business and what's called a host-community agreement, which allows for the charging of up to 3% of gross revenues for up to five years for attributable expenses incurred by the town. That is on top of the 3% municipal tax. So typically, it's about $200,000, $250,000 over three years that the town ends up getting on top of the 3%.
You are the licensing authority.
Yeah.
Quarter slide.
Okay.
And you signed the host agreement.
Yeah. And then the Cannabis Control Commission has the authority to issue the license or not.
Do they issue the licenses based on population?
No. They issue the licenses based upon applicant, you know, competency, basically. Do they have what the CCC is looking for? You have to have plans to help rectify problems caused by criminal prohibition. So it's the social equity program and economic empowerment program, which in a town like Situate, it's not because we've had disproportionate enforcement, but we do have a number of people in this town who have past convictions. And those people qualify for social equity. And so...
I guess the question I'm really asking is, how do they decide how many licenses a particular town gets?
The town does.
So we could say we want to give out 21 licenses?
No, you only get three.
You need to get approval from the state, but, yeah.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yes.
Who says, "Situate, you can have 10?"
We would be capped by the legislation that he wants to pass that would cap us at three.
Yes.
Now, just for the board, I don't think he's aware of this. I had a conversation with Karen Joseph about... with Karen Joseph at about six fifteen tonight. There is some disagreement between Attorney Bowen and Attorney Amara, whether that legislation is necessary or not. We don't have an answer to that yet, but they are, they have some disagreement as to whether or not that is necessary.
So, the, let's just pick on Norwell. The town of Norwell had to go to, or is it Hanover or Curaleefus?
Hanovers or Curaleefus.
All right. The town of Hanover had to go to the state legislator, legislature, get what, so?
They just allowed it.
They what?
They allowed it.
Yeah.
Situate prohibited it from...
They did a moratorium.
Curaleefus...
I understand, but...
Curaleefus is a medical dispensary only, so it doesn't count. Let's talk cannabis and Rockland.
All right, let's talk...
Can, Rockland had to, after they, Rockland never banned, Rockland never put a moratorium, so as soon as it was legal to apply, people were going into Rockland and saying, I want to open up a cannabis business, and talking to the local planners and so forth, where they were going to locate it, how large it was going to be, what they expect in traffic, and that entire thing. And, so they launched it right away, so that's why they're open. There's going to be a third one open in Rockland, and then Marshfield just opened up as well, so...
There's going to be two in Marshfield, I think?
Yep.
One's open, just opened?
Yep, last week.
On one thirty-nine, I think I thought I saw it.
Yeah.
Right up near the Pembroke line. I drove by it the other day.
So, no one is stopping anyone from having a marijuana retail operation on every street corner? Nobody's stopping that?
Yes, yeah, no, it's, it's one out of five. If you have, for every five alcohol liquor licenses you issue, you have, no more than one, yes.
That's the question I'm asking.
And we have, we have, I think sixteen...
Inarticulately, but that's the question I'm asking.
Yeah, I think we have sixteen permanent alcohol licenses in the town, so it will be three.
So it is based on a formula?
Yeah.
It's my understanding that the way this article is written, the dispensaries or the commerc, I'll call them commercial operations, would have the same prohibitions that the medical dispensaries would have, within five hundred feet of a daycare, or a park, or, so that's the reason, the Turfway Medical Building, there's a daycare across the street, it's within five hundred feet. So even if it wasn't going to be condos, wouldn't qualify.
Well, yeah, but you can get an abeyance. The, the town, the town can actually say, we would allow four hundred and seventy-nine feet rather than five hundred, like Jamie's Pub's location, where that would be an ideal location for a cannabis store, but it's four hundred and ninety feet from the park.
Well...
Property line to property line.
But, those, those would still be in existence.
All right.
So I'm, I'm just wondering what the other side would say, so if we brought...
The other side says, what about the children?
Let me finish my question. So, if I, if I called Anne Marie Galvin right now, and had her come down here, she'd say, if we put one in Situate, it'd be easier to access to Situate kids?
Nope, it won't be.
It will be.
No, you can't get inside.
It's closer.
Sit, look, the first time I saw weed, I was in the gate school, the old gate school. I went through high school, I never used it, but I saw it all the time. And this was during the Just Say No era.
I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but it, it's closer. It's ea, it would be easier for someone to get.
It's not.
Okay. And she would say it's a gateway drug?
That's also not true, and we have the evidence to support that that's not true.
I guarantee you she could find me a piece of paper that said exactly the opposite of what you're saying.
There's a general progression of drug use in American culture. The first drug we use typically is caffeine. We give children caffeine throughout their lifetime. This is medicinal.
I'm just telling you, this is what the other side is going to say, and they're going to, so...
I've been working on this for twenty years.
So everyone has to make their own decision on where they stand on, on cannabis and the usage of it, and the impact on, on society.
Yeah.
I guess my, the only other thing I was thinking is, you said, well, you said crime's going to go down and property values are going to go up.
Mm-hmm.
Which I find hard to believe.
It goes against the prohibition stories, but prohibition no longer exists. So that's why we're seeing the things that supported prohibition fall apart.
We can make more than this and hire more people if we built a Chick-fil-A in Situate.
No, you wouldn't. Chick-fil-A requires traffic.
Meal tax would go through the roof.
It, it, Chick-fil-A requires too much traffic, they would never open up a franchise in Situate, just like the ninety-nine never would.
Right, I guess my point is, there's more of a reason for you to do this than just the economic development in the town.
This is my life's work.
Right.
Is to liberate and, and work towards, I, I fight ignorance and disease, and prohibition relies on both. And this idea that, that prohibition is going to reduce the number of kids who have access to marijuana has proven to be false for seventy years, that it's going to lead people to use other drugs. Sixty-seven percent of Americans have used marijuana in their lifetime, and we're talking about fourteen percent of them using every day, and twenty-one percent of them using in the past thirty days, which means most people stop using. It doesn't lead to the use of other substances, despite the fact that there is a general progression of drug use from alcohol to nicotine, oh, sorry, from caffeine to nicotine to alcohol to marijuana.
Do dispensaries now in Rock, do they have a police presence at all times?
Some do, some don't. And the police presence, for example, in North Hampton, they got rid of it. The police presence is not there to prevent crime, the police's presence is there to prevent people from selling to people who might be in line. North Hampton has pretty, oh, not North Hampton, um, Great Barrington has also removed all police presence.
And did, and who, and so the dispensary would pay that detail?
The dispensary pays the detail, that goes through the, the host community agreement, if the town wants somebody there. Now, there's no more reason to have a police presence outside of it than to have it outside of a bank. I mean, if you expect that the bank's going to get robbed, yeah, but, you know, dispensaries are more secure than banks. You can't get into them without showing your identification. You're not allowed inside. And then there's a man trap, that as you walk into the dispensary, you're literally locked in a box. You can't go one way or another unless they let you in. You have to provide your ID before they let you in. You go in, you meet somebody, they guide you through the process of what they have available, and what you might want, why you might want it, and whatever, how much you might want to purchase. There is no product on display, that is, you can't touch any of it as a customer.
Sounds like the Apple Store.
Very many ways. If you want anything, you tell them what they want, and they either have a fulfillment person come from the back room and bring it out to the register, or they themselves go in the back room and bring it out to the register. You go to the register, and before you can buy it, you got to show your ID again. You get carded twice. Nobody on twenty-one is allowed in these stores. Nobody. And you can't, it's not going to happen. It's not like the liquor store where the kid could walk in the liquor store and pull a bottle off the shelf, crack it open, and take a swig. It just, that doesn't happen. It's, it's not possible, and every inch of the place is on camera. And yes, there have been troubles with people having been robbed because they have to have cash. We're getting past that. Once, once the federal law, which has been proposed by Cory Booker and endorsed by a variety of senators and representatives, will establish national banking for cannabis, so that we'll be able to have credit card purchases and, and stuff like that, to reduce the cash flow, so that also reduces the risk of, of robbery. And then every cannabis business right now has two safes. One is for their cannabis supply, and one is for their cash. And the, the armored trucks come by just about every day, because they do five to six figures, you know. Cannab provisions in Lee, they're right off the Mass Pike. During their peak, regularly does, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in sales per day. And it's, it, it's just, because the price is high, because they're in an extremely high traffic area, Situate won't do that type of volume. Nor should we want to do that type of volume. I think, you know, something like our local liquor stores. They're not huge, right? There's a, there's a cannab provisions in East Hampton. It's literally like a bodega. It's, you walk in, there's, there's a counter, there's a cash register, the cameras and so forth, but it's like two people at a time. That's it. You know, it doesn't generate a tremendous amount of traffic. When it first opened, when they first opened, traffic was huge, but that hasn't been a problem. I mean, you can go to Rockland, right near the Home Depot, and drive, there's two of them right there. And go take a look. You'll see parking lots that have three or four cars in them.
Right.
I mean, I would suggest, the board, my, I, I went to one of, one of the ones in Rockland, even before this came up, I wanted to see. First time you go in there, I'm like, why am I now being arrested? There's pot everywhere. It's kind of a surreal, surreal feeling, but, they're, they're quite the operations, if you get a chance, pop into one.
Well, I think it'll be interesting debate. I think, I think the town will have to decide what they want to do. I just think, I don't, I don't think we're doing it for economic development, and I don't think we're doing it for eighty-seven grand. I think you're doing it because you're a huge proponent of the industry, and you just want to spread it into this town.
Well, I'm not a proponent of the industry. I'm an...
You said you're, you just said this is your life.
My life is advocating for the end of prohibition. Yes, and prohibition on a business is prohibition.
You were consulting for here, you ran here, this is your life, this is your, this is your profession.
I taught for twenty years, and then I entered the cannabis industry as an American.
All right, I, I don't think that...
So, I guess it'll be interesting to see, because there's going to be people on the other side...
I understand.
That are going to bring up the whole other side of it, and we'll see what the town wants to do, but...
Yeah, this, this will probably all be re-argued on Thursday. I know Anne Marie's probably going to be at the planning board on Thursday.
The difference, I think, between me and Anne Marie, she gets paid. She actually gets a grant for the work that she does, to tell people not to use drugs, and I don't to tell people that we should change the laws. My, my work to change the laws...
That's not fair to Anne Marie to say she doesn't because she gets paid.
So you get paid too from Glita Verde LLC, sorry.
Well, no, that was my business that closed in two thousand and sixteen.
I don't think we need to go down any, to any personal...
I'm sorry, if he wants to stick to his argument, he can stick to his argument, but he doesn't have to disparage town employees and question their motives, because no one's questioning his.
Well...
Well, I was asked why I'm doing this.
I think actually someone was questioning his.
Yes, I was...
You were asked why you're doing it, but you didn't have to take a gratuitous shot at a town employee.
I was asked what my motives were.
Excuse me. It was wrong for you to mention Anne Marie Galvin.
I didn't bring her up. I was brought up to me.
But we're not going down that road any further, all right?
Sure.
We're not. So, I think we're done with this discussion for tonight.
Good.
Unless anyone on the board had any specific questions that haven't been answered.
I'm clear.
And it will be clearly a spirited discussion at town meeting, no doubt.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you all for listening. I appreciate the time that you gave me, and for, you know, asking.
Thanks for explaining.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Discuss vote Drain Layer's new license for John Riccio Junior. Does anyone have the motion?
Let me look at it. Move to approve a Drain Layer's license for John Riccio Junior.
Moved by Mr. Vignani?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. I'm looking. We're on to the one-day. So, we just had a motion by Mr. Vignani to approve the Drain Layer's license for John Riccio. It was seconded by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero, motion carries. We have a list of one-day malt and wine licenses. Someone could make a motion, please?
Move to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Ellen McKenzie for an event located at Lucky Finn, two oh-six Front Street on September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, from six thirty PM until eight thirty PM.
Second. Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, sorry.
Move to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Family Crest for an event located at Situate Maritime Center, one hundred and nineteen Edward Fosher Road on September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, from five thirty PM until nine thirty PM.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, second by...
Second.
Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four nothing, motion carries.
Move to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Ellen McKenzie for an event located at Situate Maritime Center, one nineteen Edward Fosher Road on September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, from five PM until nine PM.
Motion by Mr. Vignani?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And lastly, move to approve a one-day malt, wine and malt license to Simply Serving for an event located at Situate Maritime Center at one hundred and nineteen Edward Fosher Road on September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, from eleven AM until three PM.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, second by...
Aye.
Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Discuss vote Board and Committee appointments and renewals. You have a list in front of you, Chris? Number three and number six. Right. So, does anyone want to make a motion to nominate, appoint someone who is here tonight to the Historic Commission as a full member?
Do we want to take a, a meeting to think about it? The, I mean, there were two...
There were, there were two.
And there were two for the other position as well, for, for Waterways, or do we want...
Not really. For Waterways, there's one, a so, current associate to be promoted to full-time, and then it's up to us if we want to assign the balance of the three who came forward today as all associates.
So we could appoint three associates tonight if we wanted to, yeah. So we could appoint the current associate, David Haley, as a full member, and then appoint the other three who are here tonight as associate members, right?
Yep.
Yeah, we could do lots of stuff.
So, does anyone want to make a motion, well, on the Historical Commission, Lorraine, we did find out Mr. Glinsky, I think he said he would be willing to be an associate, but I don't think we asked the same question of Mr. Whitaker. And since Mr. Whitaker is also still on the Capitol planning, I mean...
I think, I don't think you want Mr. Glinsky to be an associate.
I thought, I thought we did. I thought we said to him...
That was for Waterways.
For Waterways, all right. Well, then perhaps we should just, unless someone feels strongly about one, one candidate or the other.
I don't, I mean, I don't know that we have to wait another, another meeting. They're both great candidates, and I think they'll both be an asset, and there are folks that want to step off that committee again in a couple of years or two, so, I don't, I think it's a win-win, honestly.
So would someone like to make a motion for the full member?
Sure. I'd like to move James Glinsky to appoint the Historic Commission as a full member for a term of three years, or until a successor is named, and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Moved by Ms. Curran, second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero, motion carries.
And I'll move to appoint Jack Whitaker to the Historic Commission as an associate member for a term of three years, or until a successor is named, and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Moved by Ms. Curran, second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. All right, now we're down to Waterways. Is that the one we want to do, or...
Yeah, you, yeah.
Lead the full member and then appoint the other three as associate members?
I'll move to appoint David Haley as a full member to the Waterways Commission for a term of three years, or until a successor is named, and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Moved by Ms. Curran, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four nothing, motion carries.
And I'd like to make a motion to appoint David Deneen, TJ Melvesti, and Brian Cronin, all as associate members to the Waterways Commission for a term of three years, or until a successor is named, and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within three, thirty days.
Second, second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, yeah.
No, and I think, you know, it's great, because these associate positions give, give folks a glimpse, yep, a path, yeah.
And they can step off or keep going.
Yep.
So now we, we have a bunch of reappointments, right?
Yeah, the reason why we don't have everybody that wishes to be a full member is that would be the thing to do, and still be able to go about.
And that was the postal advisory, yes.
Yeah, yep.
Move to reappoint George Humphrey, Tracy Kelly, Michelle McGrath, and Janice Murphy to the Situate Cultural Council for a term of three years, or until a successor is named, and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days. within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four-nothing, motion carries.
Going to eleven?
Yep, there it is, move to reappoint Joanne Wickoff to Water Resources Commission for a term of three years, or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Motion by Mr. Goodrich, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four-nothing, motion carries. Move to reappoint Howie Kurtzberg, Craig Rosenquist, and Davidson Kosky to the Waterways Commission for a term of three years, or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second by?
Second.
Mr. Goodrich. Beat you to it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four-nothing, motion carries.
And I'll move to reappoint Steve Gard as an associate member to the Waterways Commission for a term of three years, or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Motion by Ms. Curran, all in favor, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you, thank you. We make it headway, right?
Yep.
Yep, onward and upward. So, on to liaison reports, does anyone have one?
I'll just note that, um, on CPCT, we've got a meeting on Monday, where they're going to talk about a couple of those issues. One is going to be the, um, baseball field, and the other one is going to be the border street, so, I'm sure Andrew, A and I are, one of us will be there. Um, and the other one is, uh, Rec Commission sent a letter out today that they supported the baseball field being put at the old gate school.
Oh.
And the field back there.
So, that will-
And that was the Recreation Commission?
Rec Commission.
Thank you. Something surprised about that? I don't know. Andrew, liaison, liaising with any labor-
Yeah, no, there was the Historic Comm- No, I'm, I'm, I'll, we'll fill in more after the next meeting.
All right.
I'm good, nope, I didn't have any meetings the past week, it's like a week, yeah.
Sort of big vacation week last week. So, I don't have anything either, other than hopefully within a week and a half or so, we will be done with the school committee appointment, that would be good. Uh, Lorraine, did we get, um, I know I saw a email from Mr. Taft answering the three questions at the school committee.
I've sent it forward to you all, made the answers, and I actually printed copies all for you.
Thank you.
For the next two nights, Michelle, I'll leave the copy tonight for you.
All right, thank you. Oh, that just came in tonight, okay, great.
Great, thank you.
Some I didn't get, so, I mean, they all came in, but some I couldn't open, I had them, so.
It was a little cumbersome, sorry to say.
But, no, I'm open today, they're all destroyed, although they were all advised to twenty-six and they're doing, they're doing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we're six-thirty tomorrow, right, not six?
Six thirty.
Okay.
I'll be there next, just so we're sure that it's set up.
Okay, all right. And are you doing the minutes for us tomorrow night?
I'll be there.
Is, who's doing Thursday night?
I'll be there Thursday.
You will? Are you sure?
Yeah.
All right, well, hopefully, the next, the next meeting won't be quite as cumbersome as vote, in terms of minutes, but.
How many interviews are we doing?
Eight.
Three each night?
Four, four each night, there's eight, eight cannabis.
Four, four, and then the discussion.
And then the vote, yeah. So, and I, my plan is not to have any discussion at all after the first night or the second night, and let the discussion happen on the fifteenth. And, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, Maureen and I were talking about it earlier, and it seems like it might be worthwhile to ask everyone who's on the both committees to come to the next, to the third, the fifteenth meeting with rankings of their own, as to who they, you know, number one, two, three, four.
It's a good idea.
And then we can-
I mean, if they want to send you the rankings and the events, I can have a great way up there, if that's helpful.
Is, is that legal?
I don't know if that's allowed.
They send it to her? Yes.
So-
You can't send it to the show.
But we could send them to you.
They can go to Lorraine, if she can't share them, she can compile it and give it out the night of the meeting.
Perfect, okay.
You can, you can talk a bit about that, that was just a secret.
No, let's, we're driving this train, so, um, why don't we do it that way? And that way, you will-
You want to figure out a date and let everybody know?
Right, well, if we're-
I'm really after person, like-
Yeah, I would say-
I have to edit the date and compile it.
Right, so I'm thinking, if we tell people by Monday-
The business is on Tuesday or Monday.
Well, I'd push it even, I'd be even more aggressive, I'd say, if the interview's on Wednesday, Thursday, by Monday morning, you should have been able to review your notes.
And then this is on Monday afternoon.
Yeah, and send it to you, and then you can-
Tomorrow I can compile a ranking sheet.
That would be great.
But I don't know, what do you want to rank? I mean, just your choices.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think different people-
We don't have criteria to rank right now.
No, we don't.
There's no criteria, just, these are my choices.
Well, I think, you know, when you talk to people, some people, something's more important than something else, and, uh, so I wouldn't want to have to say to people, you have to rank them based on this, it's-
Yeah, well, just like we did with DDR, really, you said, this is my top person, and then-
Right.
We tracked, okay, eight of you said this was your top person. You know, seven of you said this was second, five of you said this was third, and so all the way down.
Lorraine, when you do that, you know, there'll be like a name and then a box of ranking, can you leave a big thing on the right where you can write notes?
Yes, yourselves, yes.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I personally answered to the question, so you can put notes on that too.
Yes.
Because you won't have a ranking thing by tomorrow.
Right.
Oh, we won't?
I mean, I can try, but I don't feel tomorrow.
Just joking.[1543.02]